Lockley, I think I started my dinner with a decent choice.
We're all together on that.
It's going to be our last order. Salute to the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni?
Here.
Councilor Caprio?
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Fawning?
Here.
Councilor Pacey?
Here.
Councilor Hodgson?
Councilor Rose?
Here.
Good evening. Tonight's meeting has been moved, as most of you know. This is now a special meeting, so the agenda cannot be amended. There will be public comment, but I have to limit it. And I'm going to defer to the town attorney right now to explain the town council's role in our community.
Could you turn down the police, your mic, so we can hear your story?
Cut. I have no control over it. Anthony or somebody, could you turn the mic up?
Yeah.
Is there a button on this mic?
No, I don't know. Is that better? Can you hear?
Yes.
All right, good, thank you. John?
Yes, okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. How's that, okay?
Good morning.
All right. It's fairly obvious to anyone living in town that this evening is going to be marked by the filing of a petition. That triggers a certain legal process that some of you may be aware of in accordance with our charter. Two things have to happen before the council takes up the matter on the merits. One is that the town clerk, when she receives the petition, will verify the sufficiency of the petition. The town attorney, as the legal advisor to the town council, as well as to all the boards and commissions and officers in the town, also has to look at it to ensure that the question is valid. We can't ask the town council to do an act that is outside of its authority to do, or else it would be unlawful. So I haven't seen the petition. As soon as that is filed, I will also have a copy made, so I can review it, and I will do so as quickly as possible, so that I can promise you that a written opinion will be submitted to the town council and the town manager certainly before the end of the week. I realize the importance of this to so many people in town on either side of the issue, and I don't intend to let it linger in my hands any longer than it has to. So that essentially is what we can do, or promise you that we can do this evening. Receive your petition, scrutinize it for sufficiency and validity, and then give you a fair opportunity to comment on it at a meeting to be held specifically within the 30 days, as also provided by the town charter.
Thank you, John. All right, may I have a motion to approve the September 16, 2014 special WPCA?
So moved.
Second?
I have one correction on page four, item 8A. It should be for, under the superim, it should be for electrical upgrades in a timing system for the tenants and basketball courts at NVIS.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Whitworth, seconded by Councilor Pacey, recognizing the corrections. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawning?
Yes.
Councilor Pacey?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda, Correspondence, Citizen Statements, Unfinished Business, New Business. Item A, the North Bramford Land Conservation Trust, 12 Bitter Street Drive.
Mayor, if I may, if you'll look in your folders, you have the revised agenda, which I just stated is because we had to move, not only move the meeting, but also on the agenda, we moved that item to later on in the agenda. That's not actually a Water Pollution Control Authority item. It's an item that'll appear later on in the agenda.
Okay. Just a footnote, Mike, have we gotten that surveyed? I believe the council requested that.
That's all part of it. I'd like you to take action, and we'll take action tonight.
Do we need to make a motion to table it?
No, it's further out.
Okay, item six, Citizen Statements and Petitions. Item, Regular Town Council Meeting. Item seven, Reports of Committees, Boards, and Commissions. First item, A, Economic Development Commission?
Yes, the Economic Development Commission met last evening, had a very good meeting with our consultants from Yale, Alan Pfeiffer, Andre Harwell, who have done revisions to the schematics or horizons that you saw at the previous meeting, based on our meeting with the Department of Transportation and the feedback that they gave to us with respect to, you know, the entrances and the ingress out of the parcel, which was very helpful. And the group did a lot of focus on those designs and opportunities there for that site, and then began to discuss a number of other things in terms of preparation for the November 1, Charette. It was a date that they have picked out, and that'll be a Saturday, right here in this room, from 1:00 to 3:00 on Saturday, November 1. So what they'd like to do is continue to address the site issues, but also that the planning is to involve the planning of the zone, and appear or come to their meeting on the 16th. They'd like to come to the town council on the 21st, all in preparation of gearing up for the November 1 meeting. So it was very productive, they're very excited about what's being pioneered, and they will give you a full 320% of that.
Sure. Thank you. Item B, Permanent Project Building Committee.
The next meeting for the permanent project will be next Tuesday, October 14, due to the holiday on the 13th.
Okay, thank you, Rose. Item C, BOE Town Council Communications Subcommittee, that also?
We're not meeting for the month of October, but there is a special meeting tomorrow night for the Budget and Operations Committee from the Board of Ed, and they have invited this entire council for a walkthrough of the, all of the buildings, and it's starting at 5:30 in the auditorium, and that's tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you. Item eight, the Town Manager's Report. Okay, CCM, Connecticut Discount Card Report.
That information is in your packet, the numbers are significant, I think the trend is good, it reports that well over 20,000 have been saved within the community, I think it's an excellent goal, and we'll continue that number, I'm sure we'll continue to plan this great program, and I just wanted the council to be aware that it's important, very critical.
So the number has increased. Item B, Connecticut Potential RMQ for gigabit internet network.
Yes, this is on the agenda for just as an FYI, I'd like to bring this back to the council for your consideration, there is no monetary or fiscal impact to the town. We were invited by Mayor from Davin to participate in their rollout of an RMQ that they're working on, that is geared toward trying to get a developer to come in to put together a gigabyte type of network to loop within the region. So they have taken lead on this, there's some information that I've provided for you. We're gonna, I'm gonna do in-house with Anthony and Sivio, and we'll work on getting the information they're seeking, but I'd like to bring back and make presentation with the 21st. I think it's a valuable economic tool, but also, what the goal in a nutshell is to get super high speed, which is essentially would be a thousand times faster than anything that we currently exist within a large community where they, their numbers and reduce the cost for every single resident living in the community. So we'll have more on that after the meeting.
Thank you, Michael. Item C, project request for the Boy Scouts troop number 453 painting of historic gas station. I know I was approached about this, this is that small little gas station that's set up by the Atwater Library behind the historic barn, and I think it's a great project for the Boy Scouts to do. I think they just kind of wanted to let us know.
Yeah, I thought maybe they might be present, but I don't, I don't see anyone here for tonight's meeting, though.
No, I don't. I don't believe they were coming, so. But I do want to thank them, I think it's a wonderful project. Item D, Possible Internship, UNH graduate student, dual degree candidate, EMPA.
Yeah, this is something new, it's an opportunity that came across my desk from the other managers within the state, that there's a student at University of Davin looking for an internship, and I wanted to bring to the council, I don't believe council has, in the past, and I may be wrong, used or set up an internship for undergraduate or graduate, but in this case, graduate student, the resume is included into our folder, I think would be a great opportunity, because this candidate is a, I would say mid career candidate, with experience, and he's looking at two degrees in emergency management and public administration. He's looking for a paid internship, in a sense, and bringing to the council for authorization in terms of creating a internship, and bringing these students along board, most likely for 10 to 15 hours a week.
And Mike, who would he be working with, or?
He would be under my direct supervision.
So are you asking the council for our blessings?
Yeah, and nothing that you need to do tonight, if you'd like, you can bring back that in formal motion, and if there's any other information you require, you know, I would like to negotiate with him in terms of bringing him on board to pay, you know, there is money in the budget under the emergency management, but we've funded this line item in 4250, so there is money in the budget, so I'd like to talk with him about bringing him on board, should his counsel be interested in helping him.
Is he gonna get academic credits for doing this, as well as being paid?
I believe that he would get credit with respect to the papers that he has to submit to his professors, and I'm going to be talking with him and calling references as well, that's my understanding. And this is, this is more of an informal internship than formal, and that's what I have to work out with him, but I just, as a concept idea, I wanted to bring it to your level, I mean, it's a paid position I'm looking for, to bring him on, and we have a...
What is it the town's gonna get for the compensation they're providing for this person?
Well, he's gonna help out with the emergency management right now, we need to be, I need to help with writing the local emergency operations plan, and other plans and reports that we need to slide submit to the state, and he has the background in emergency management as the classes that you see there in his graduate degree, so his experience, he can jump right in, he's familiar with those plans right now.
Is this a function, we don't have somebody that could already do that?
It's a function that falls to the town manager currently, because the town has been unsuccessful in recruiting or getting someone in the emergency management position.
Our fire chief had done that before.
Okay.
And also, we had grant money coming, but the fire, but the fire chief, as our AOC, we were getting grant money, I believe, for Anthony, is that correct? And that offset the salary, I believe. Um, let's see.
Can you bring it back to his next meeting? Can you bring something back to next meeting?
Yeah.
After you negotiate with him?
You'll have a proposal out to next meeting as far as negotiations and...
I was told by the town manager, item nine, would be tabled. Item 10, Citizen Statements, Petitions, and Correspondence. I'm gonna ask that we limit your statements to two minutes if possible, identify yourself, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Daniel Arman, 77 Jitsy Drive. Hi folks, my name is Daniel Arman, 77 Jitsy Drive in North Bramford.
All right, we're fixing it. There you go.
Hi, my name is Dan Arman of 77 Jitsy Drive in North Bramford. In the interest of transparency, I'm on economic development, however, I'm not here speaking on behalf of that committee, I'm only here to speak on behalf of myself as a citizen, as a neighbor of all you. We all are here because we care about our town, and we all have differences of opinion. I just encourage people, when we have a difference of opinion, to do it with respect. We have a lot of good questions, there's a lot of good answers to a lot of those questions, and some people are not gonna get their answers, but I just hope we leave here with dignity tonight, and in the future too, because it improves of us to be a welcoming town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi. My name is Chris Crammett, I live at 49 Portland Drive, North Bramford. I have a statement to read on behalf of the citizens of North Bramford. Residents of North Bramford and electorate believe in the democratic process. Essential to the democratic process is the expectation that elected and appointed officials act honestly and in good faith, executing their duties in the best interest of the town's citizens. We believe good faith was not used in the process to change the zoning regulations to include bulk propane storage. Section C 411 of the town charter enables the citizens to petition or referendum. Ejection of the referendum for technical nuances tells the citizens of this town that our leaders and public servants disregard the will of the people. The citizens received the form to be used by the town clerk. A petition of 1,019 signatures was obtained and notarized, and states that the citizens of this town are against the change in zoning regulations that allowed bulk storage of propane and the project proposed for 60,000 gallons of propane storage on Councilman Pacey's property. So there is no misunderstanding. They undersigned what the mayor, town council, and all town council commissions do clearly hear what the electorate is saying. We want action to stop this proposal by any means possible, even if the council has to lead the repeal of the regulation or file their own ordinance prohibiting bulk propane storage in the town of North Bramford. I have the petitions for you.
Thank you. You can present. You can present the petition to the clerk. John's gonna press the button. Chris Crammett. John, I'm gonna drop those remarks.
If you notice, we needed 450 signatures for repeal.
Please don't yell out, so, or I will have to ask you to leave.
Martin, can't hear you, he doesn't speak into the mic.
Okay, I just want to perhaps clarify something that the last speaker may have insinuated benignly, and that is this, the council has to follow the law, and so do all of us in this room. It isn't a matter of getting reelected, it isn't even a matter of what their personal preference is. The first and foremost is we are a body of laws, and that's the first thing that we look at. The second thing is, I don't want anybody to think that anyone is going to have their opinion stifled because of some nuance or technicality. I personally approved the form that you used for your petition, so that is not an issue. And as far as the town clerk goes, her statutory and charter responsibility is simply to verify the signatures as electors, and I don't expect that to be a problem. So no one is here to play gotcha, or to try and dismantle anybody's very strong feelings. Our first inquiry, however, must be whether or not this action that you've asked us to take is lawful. And as I said, as far as I'm concerned, I will render my opinion to the council in very short order, hopefully before the end of the week. So please don't think that the people on the town council are looking for a way to defeat your petition, because they haven't even discussed the merits. And if this petition is found to be valid, then you will have your opportunity to discuss the merits at the next meeting, when the petition for initiative would be taken up, if it is found to be valid. So at this point, the town council basically has its hands tied, waiting for people like myself to offer them an opinion. But it really, you really should not in any way think that this matter is going to be decided on some procedural nicety, because it isn't. It's going to be decided on our charter and on the law of the state of Connecticut. And then it's gonna be up to you, if it passes that test, to convince the council that what you've stated in your petition should be what the council authorizes.
Any further questions?
Tom Anastasia, 395 St. Over, North Bramford. I normally don't attend these meetings, I normally don't think I need to be here, but I'm not sure what I just heard. We have a concerned citizens' partnership here, concerned about what's taking place. What I'm hearing is that we're gonna have to follow the law, which we all want to do, but we want some guidance from our elected officials to help us with a problem that we perceive to be grave. I don't see why we need 60,000 gallons of propane in that area of the town, or in any town. I just don't get it. I understand that you have laws, and we respect those laws, but we're asking you, our elected officials, to help us sort this matter out, not tell us what's gonna take place, what's the decision's gonna be made. So I ask you, what are you gonna do to help us beat this matter, because that's why we're here? Is there an answer to that? Are you sympathetic to that? Are you concerned if I'm gonna cut my taxes, Peter? Because I don't see one reason why this should happen, not one. If someone could tell me one, I'd be happy to listen.
I believe the town attorney can answer you. The town council, we are the financial board. John, can you explain the planning of zoning?
The town council is essentially your board of finance, it does have legislative powers. The issue, very simply, is not whether or not it's a good thing that there be propane tanks in town, but whether this body has the authority to do what you want it to do. That's all it, that's all this is about.
Which body does it?
I'm sorry?
Which body does it?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Which body in this town has the ability to help us with this process?
Well, this regulation that you're seeking to overturn in some way or repeal was drafted and passed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that would be a logical body that would have jurisdiction. Now I know you've been there before, I don't know the result of that, but I don't know if anything can be done. If you want, if you want the town council to ask me a question as to what other recourse you may have, that's a different question. Right now, I'm looking at your petition, and frankly, my bent is always to try and not authenticate, but to make the petition work, if it can work. But I can't make it work if it's not, if it doesn't comport with the law. And if it's, if it's my final view and my recommendation to the town council, that this is not the appropriate body, then I'm, then that's all that is, is the opinion that it's not the appropriate body. Doesn't mean that there isn't another appropriate body, doesn't mean that conditions could be attached to whatever approvals may or may not be forthcoming in the future, that could partially accomplish what you want. The only thing before me are these petitions and the questions that you've asked, and I have to give you an honest answer as to whether or not, and I haven't even seen them yet, as to whether or not this body is able to implement what you've asked them to do.
I understood. I guess what I'm trying to find out, if that's the case, where do we go from here? Because this isn't just gonna be decided by procedure, or decided by what is right or wrong, based on the law. We want to figure out where we can go, and get your council to figure out how to do that. That's really what I think these folks are here to find out today. To defeat this, and if it can't be defeated, find out what is the proper course... To defeat this, and if it can't be defeated, find out what is the proper course to begin to defeat it, and not just be told that we have to go through a procedure, and once the law is looked at, a decision will be made, and that's going to be the end of it. Because that seems a little bit unfair to the town citizens.
Well, you've elected this procedure, I'm going to look at it. If it comports with the law, then you're in the right place. If you're not, you can come here and ask the town council to ask me for a legal opinion as to what is the right procedure, if there is a right procedure, or what other options you may have. Don't forget, you know, there are regulations about passing zoning amendments, there's appeals, that may have all gone by the board already, so it's not going to be an easy question. But, you know, you have to take one step at a time. I'm not here to make a judgment, and neither is the town council, but you've come to this house, and we have to look at your petition in terms of where you are right now. It doesn't mean that the council, and I don't know how I'm going to decide this and recommend to the town council, but it doesn't mean that it's the end of the road. It means that you've come here, and this may or may not be the proper body to give you the relief that you're looking for.
So we will get direction to where to go from here?
You will get direction from me as to whether this is the right place, and then you have to go through the town council to request them to ask me an opinion. I can't, I don't accept at the direction of the town council.
I guess one thing before I leave, I guess it got to this point, you said there might have been some opportunities that were missed, that it should have been vetted somewhere else along the line, it seems to be. And I'm very disappointed that that opportunity wasn't kind of totally vetted by the town so that we could fully understand the magnitude of this problem. I just found out about this recently, it didn't seem as though it was well publicized. I think there were some errors in the way that we went about this. I think we should have concerns as citizens, that this isn't safe for the town, and that should be something that you guys should have guidance like, too. So hopefully, once you have your ruling, we can get some of your resources to find out how the citizens of this town could protect this town. Thank you.
Can I just say something, sir?
Sure.
The town council, I've sat on for five years, I have never, P and Z, like people, businesses coming into our town, we don't all get notice. We don't know what applications are coming in, that's not our venue, so...
But if the magnitude is within your responsibility...
Please, please.
I think magnitude of this sort should be within your responsibility. I understand...
The town council, though, as John can explain, we, by the state and by our charter, we have no control over land or any of that type of stuff. It doesn't come before us.
And you should be, you should be very watchful and be very concerned if the town council starts interfering with boards and commissions who are making property decisions, because that's not what they're supposed to be doing.
(Laughter). Bring it to our attention. We're not asking them to make a decision, but bring it to our attention is, I think, is a worthy act. So I'm not asking for anyone to meddle in anyone else's business, but I think as a community, we have to decide whether, is this in our best interest? The pure question I have to ask before I, I heard it, before I came up here, why are we doing this? And if it's just for economic development, that's a very little bar, 60,000 gallons of propane for revenue, and that just doesn't seem right. So that, it's not a moral question, folks, it's not even about whether it's right or wrong, legal or not, it's moral seems us wrong. And that's what I'm asking this board to take a look at. Are we doing the moral thing, the right thing for this community? And then we need to figure that out, however legally we have to do that. That's what you folks should be doing and helping us find that path, because we believe in this town, there's no room for more trucks on the road, no more room for 60,000 gallons worth of propane, there just isn't room for this mismanagement in this town. And that should be all of our responsibility. So it's a moral question, not a legal question. Act with your hearts, please.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is James Clary, I'm a new resident here in town. Did I hear you say, sir, that you okayed the petition, the form of the petition?
I approved the blank form. There was nothing written on the petition. That was the first step. One of the questions were, one of the questions was whether or not affidavits had to be separately filed, or could they be right on the form. So the actual form in blank is what I approved, so that's not an issue for me.
No, there was nothing, there was no proposal on what you wrote, just the blank form.
Correct.
Requires that the signatures be signed before the... That was on it, nothing else.
And also, yes, they, essentially, whatever you have on here, I approved it.
Had they mentioned anything about the reversal of the regulation for the zoning commission? Was that on the, was that written on it when you approved it?
No, there was no question, there was no question.
There was no proposal yet?
No proposal yet.
Do you know who wrote the proposal?
I do not.
My comment goes to the responsibility of the town council to protect the interests of property and the safety and the lives of the people of the town of North Bramford. Yeah. Good.
If this continues, I'm going to cut off public comment.
Please let me speak.
Show respect, please.
This is the most dangerous installation ever proposed to be installed in North Bramford in its history. And I believe that under the spirit of the law, I believe a spirit of courtship, probably rule in agreement with this, that the threshold responsibility to notify and to air this issue publicly is much, much higher than it is if you're voting on putting in parking meters or raising the cost of a dog's tag five bucks. Nobody really cares about that stuff. Yes, if it happens, oh, it happens, that's a small thing. But this is a proposal that has the explosive power, and I know that the chances are minuscule, but it has the explosive power equal to one-tenth of the nuclear bombs that were used on Hiroshima and Nagasaki, and that is the risk that the people of this town simply do not, that's the precedent, says many others. Fundamentally, there are 500 to 1,000 residences within a thousand feet of this two-tank facility. And if you read the scientific literature on it, there is some published, within that 1,000-foot radius, the effects from that blast are enormous. The radiant heat is, will give you secondary burns, it blows out windows to about half a mile, it lights houses on fire within a thousand feet. Between that tank proposed site and the old town hall, there are 400 residences in three or four condominiums and associated, 400 residents in condominiums and apartments, and apartments. Those people are directly in the concussive blast areas, and there are three bridges surrounding this area. And if that were to explode, those bridges would focus that blast and send it right down on the block, right over the old town hall. Now, you can go down and look and see, there's a ridge behind it, ridge on either side. And it would focus that blast, and it would send a blast wave of about 50 feet high roaring down that, not only would it be normal blast, but it would be a focused and intensified blast. Very, very dangerous. Chances of happening are not high, except there is a 100-foot cell tower within 150 feet of the proposed site. That cell tower will get hit by lightning every single time an electrical storm goes over. It's grounded, it's bonded, it will attract the lightning. If you look at an ultra-slow motion film of a lightning blast, you'll see the positive electrical streamers come up from the ground, negative electrical streamers, it's ionized gas. When they find each other, blam, you get a lightning flash. You are asking that this, and all the metal, every bit of metal, the fence, the tanks, piping, everything except the trucks that are sitting on rubber tires, are going to be sending up these ionized, these possibly charged ionized streamers. That increases the risk of this thing blowing up many, many times. I don't know what the math is.
Sir, I don't want to interrupt you, but I got to move this along to other people.
Yes, I understand that, I understand. But I'm speaking directly to these people.
No, I know.
Your responsibility as the town council, whether you have direct legal responsibility over the zoning regulations or not, you are the shepherds of the town of North Bramford. Under God, under the laws, morally, legally, your job is to protect all these people from having a, what is a tenth, essentially, a small nuclear weapon going up. I know the chances are small, but we have 1,000 people who don't want to take that chance of signing the petition, and God only knows how many other people. That's the real issue. There's two other things I want to say. Mister lawyer, you are hired and paid for by the town council. They decide whether you work for the town of Bramford or not, correct?
That's correct.
That's right. So I think there's a conflict of emphasis. Mr. Fusing, you own the land. Oh, by the way, do you know you're listed on Facebook as living in Birmingham? Do you know that?
Would you like to know where my house is, sir? It's within an eighth mile of your supposed site.
I know, 22 Beach, it is where I live.
You could come check right now.
Yes, well, I just want to say, there's another concussive wind that's going to run right down to Navy Pass House there, so that's the other direction this thing's going to really, you know, sail. So what's going on in this town, what's been going on since it started, doesn't patch the sniff test. You scratch it, smells bad. Your responsibility as the elected, your elected officials, correct, all of your elected, you're the shepherds, under God, under US law, under state law, under town law, you're the shepherds. It's your responsibility to protect us from exactly this kind of facility. And I'll tell you what, the economic planner of this town, with a little help from some other people, in fact, a lot of people signed the petition, would be more than happy to find lots of business to come into town or replace the taxes. What is the, what's the estimated taxes expected to come to this facility a year? I heard $80,000, is that accurate?
I don't know.
Yeah, well, no.
I don't know.
$38,000, $38,000. Is it worth risking 1,000 residences, hundreds, possibly thousands of lives, millions of dollars of property, for $37,000 a year in taxes? I mean, most of these people, 1,000 people, if they give the town $37 a year to keep it out, I'm sure they wouldn't have any problem doing that.
Thank you. All right. Can I ask, does anybody else that has any...
I'm stopped.
You're done. Thank you.
Yes.
Tom Gallagher, 24th Ward, Gilford. Now, to my understanding, after this was turned down in Guilford, to my understanding, you went out there and seek out Sullivan, is that correct?
Uh, no, not entirely.
During the May meeting, your name came up, saying that you sent them out.
No.
It's on video.
Yeah, it's on video. Yeah, and myself. I did, I always call businesses, I'm working with several that I can't talk about right now.
Well, the people of Guilford didn't want it either. Is that correct? Then you seek out this company to bring in a bomb, and then this guy's going to sell his property at a loss because he wants to help out. What kind of nonsense is that?
You don't know the who.
No, nobody seems to know. You're asking, you're asking Guilford to have it.
I want to hold, but it's titled to know.
You know, I think it would be time to step down, resign, something like that, play games like this in this town.
There is no games. Guilford, no.
Selling property for a loss, just very convenient.
Yeah, I could sit here all night and try to engage with you. J.J. Sullivan, J.J. Sullivan did come to our town, they looked at three properties and came across on this property. Now, in Guilford, there were reasons they were turned down, because of location.
We got a location, too, we got a lot of people around here.
Let me finish.
Correct.
Counselor Rose and myself went to Guilford, talked to people there, there are two facilities there. The reason Sullivan, where they were put into the site, was in a historic district. It was not, there was not, the zoning was not correct for where they were going to put it. They still actively have, they still actively have land, I believe in Guilford, that they are still looking to try and put at these things.
Okay, so the historical area, boulder homes are historical in purpose, or valuable. So they deny us from over here because of historical value, and that means you're my people? Does that make any sense to you?
Is St. Hill Road an industrial park, or is that, I mean...
At the Stones Throw, you got plenty of houses out there, don't you?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not gonna...
I mean, if you live, nobody would need here, would they?
I'm not going to argue with you about it.
No, of course not.
Okay, I mean, we have businesses down St. Hill Road.
Right.
And, you know, whether they come here or not, I really, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, so basically what we're going to do is go around like a dog chasing his tail, and then sell property at a loss, because I want to help the guys out.
Not at all.
Come on out.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Butler, and I'm the executive director of Evergreen Woods. Evergreen Woods is a retirement community here in town that is within the one mile of the propane tanks. Evergreen Woods, so my role is twofold. Unfortunately, I'm not a taxpayer of North Bramford, but I do happen to manage the community, the second-largest taxpayer in the town of North Bramford. It happens to, it also happens to be the home to over 300 seniors, let's just say over the age of 70, a little bit northern. And so the residents expect me, actually, let me back up for a moment, because what I want to first say is that I have absolutely the most utmost respect for emergency services in the town of North Bramford. The response of the police department and the fire department for a community like mine, in the six years that I've managed that community, has been outstanding, under the direction particularly of Chief Seward, who I know has been unable to answer some of the questions, but I want to give kudos to emergency services, because they do an amazing job. It's important, what is my contribution? But what the residents charge me with tonight is representing them, much like the town members here, who are actually voters, as are my folks, we have about 300 voters at Evergreen Woods. The question really is, I mean, there's been a lot of things discussed tonight, and I don't want to rehash that. But what I have to provide to the state of Connecticut is an evacuation plan that explains exactly how, in the event of a disaster, which quite honestly is what we're all concerned about, I need to put in writing to the state of Connecticut at the moment that this installation is put in place, how an emergency response system that is based on volunteers, particularly at 3:00 AM, when who knows what will happen? We never know when an emergency will happen. And not only are my residents asking me to come to them and say, "What is the answer?" I'm asking the town council, because I have to have an answer for those 300-plus residents, 200-plus employees, and hundreds more family members that are asking me this question. So I'm asking the question, not only on behalf of my residents, but also the people who are here. What is the plan? How do we handle a disaster? It may be a very small percentage chance, but the state government expects me to respond to them the moment these are installed. So I ask the town council, what is that answer? What do I tell my constituents, my residents? How do I, how do I ensure that they feel comfortable in the middle of the night in the event of an utter disaster, which they have experienced, by the way? Several years ago, when there was a storm that took out power, phones, et cetera, the town of Bramford was right there. They came in with police, with fire, volunteer firefighters, they gave us radios, they had a whole plan to make sure that those 300 seniors were safe. They did an amazing job in concert with my staff. The next year, we did the same thing. I will tell you that now my residents enjoy full generators that allow them to make sure that they never have to worry about electricity, fire protection, et cetera. And I've taken that burden off the town of North Bramford. I shouldn't take so much credit, the owners of Evergreen Woods have. So I'll ask you again, and I would like an answer, I know this is public comment, but I need to bring something back to my residents, that if this moves forward, what is the evacuation plan? What is the response to any level of emergency preparedness? What is the response to any level of emergency preparedness? And I also will need that for the Department of Public Health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tom Schreiber, ten blocks from Guilford, in Ramford. Mayor, this is mostly gonna be directed at you. One, you should be very proud of the turnout of the town as the highest ranking official. I just have one kind of short thing to say. Did you, or a question to ask of you, did you present at the planning and zoning meeting when this subject matter came up? Yes or no?
Present?
Did you present, did you stand up in front of the planning and zoning?
I made a comment.
You made a comment?
That I was in favor of.
Okay, so our highest ranking official in our town made a comment to our planning and zoning board when they needed to make a decision. You should know, you know, as a leader of this town, you should understand that your voice may be heard much louder than others, okay? So, I just implore you to take a leadership role. We've all been there, we've all learned from our mistakes. This seems like a big mistake for this town, and it's a mistake that you may have made with the board. They may have felt pressured, they may not have. I'm gonna tell you now, when you look at this thing, it just screams, someone in a leadership role needs to take the bull by the horns, that would be you, sir, and put an end to this.
And I pledge allegiance to the...
I have two things to ask, um, let me get this straight. Your attorney said that trying to petition tonight, that the town council can't do anything about that, is that correct? Did I understand that properly?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
You can't, um, you, the town council cannot do anything about this, of this thing. You said you can't interfere with other committees, so your hands are tied?
No, I didn't say that. I said that...
Could you clarify?
Sure. I said that, as soon as I get a chance to look at the question, I'll make sure that it's a question that can be answered by the town council lawfully. If you, if it turns out that, no matter how legitimate, no matter how appropriate your feelings may be, that the town council does not have the authority under local or state law to implement what you want them to implement, I will have to say that. But I don't know that as we sit here tonight.
Okay, so, this was a change of zoning made by the Planning and Zoning Committee, correct?
Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, I am advised, amended their regulations to permit propane storage in this zone.
Who petitioned the Planning and Zoning Commission to make this change? I've seen the legal notice, it said it was that...
I assume it was, I assume it was a private applicant who made that.
Is that on record anywhere? Can you track that down?
Well, it, it should be, it's a public record.
Right, because there's nothing in the legal notice about who made that application to change the zoning. So it wasn't the town council that made that application to change the zoning?
No, it wasn't the town council.
So when the mayor canceled the petition, you know, at the Planning and Zoning Committee, which doesn't interfere with, of course, and said that he didn't invite J.J. Sullivan, he didn't make this proposal, it was not Mayor Cantrell?
No.
It was not John Foosey who won the election?
No.
No.
How come, how come when I went to Planning and Zoning for the Save It Discount Store that was coming in, and Bilco, and all these other stores, and also, also it was stated, please...
Excuse me, I'm not worried about saving discount stores.
It was also stated...
I don't think Mr. had $60,000.
It was, I'm not talking about him, we had another, we had another store. But it was also previously stated that Ramford Fire Department responded, it was actually North Ramford firefighters that responded to Evergreen Woods.
Okay, so let me get, I was about, who made this petition to change the zoning?
I don't know. It was not the town council, we don't get involved.
Of course not. Okay. So, when this petition was made, did anybody do a cost analysis of how much tax revenue this was going to bring in?
I don't know.
I'm guessing it's $1,000,000. So somebody said over there, what was it, $37,000?
I think it's, I think it's $37,000.
Okay, how much is the property of my house, which is within last zone, how much is my property going to value? And the other residents who live nearby, how much is your property value going down? So, if you need $37,000 from the facility, how much are you gonna lose if my property values go down? Has, has that been taken into consideration?
Should we evaluate our property?
You know, you know, but J.J.'s often said that, they asked for a study to see how much property value's going down. Are you willing to do that? And take the silence as a no?
Look, I, I think your, I think your premise, I understand where you're coming from, and it's really not my place to, to exchange with you, but I don't think anybody looks at anybody's application before the Planning and Zoning Commission as, "How much money is it going to bring in for me, or for the town?" Every person, J.J. Sullivan has their own council, they're in the business of fuel services, they made an application. The Planning and Zoning, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a judgment. That's what it is. I mean, there's nothing, the town council doesn't engage in the calculus of every application that's made to see where the dollars are gonna fall. We don't have, Planning and Zoning, by the way, doesn't have the right to prohibit, it's a regulatory agency, okay? Unless, unless the activity is illegal, there is no prohibition of anything that can legally be conducted.
But they did not have to change the zoning, is that correct?
They didn't have to change the zoning, uh, I don't, look, I don't, I'm not familiar with the matter, I wasn't involved in it. They have their, you know, they made their own judgment. You know, an application was presented, it was placed in the prop, in a, in a zone that, that would have been appropriate for that, I assume, and that's what they did. There was no consultation in advance by the town attorney, nor would there normally be. It's an independent decision.
Well, you know, that makes me even more worried about the safety of North Ramford. If you don't look at what the application could involve further down the line, what's to stop them building a nuclear silo at one end of town, a research facility where they could have poisonous gas inside, anything could come to town?
Look, we have blasting activities in North Ramford. They're, they're permitted, they're regulated, they're heavily regulated with conditions, but they exist.
So you want the blasting facility to be the same time as the $60,000 propane wall?
Those, those activities are regulat, are regulatory, they are to be regulated. You cannot prohibit illegal, illegal activity, that's all I can tell you.
Well, nobody knows how J.J. Sullivan's gonna follow the regulations.
We don't know anything, you're right. We, we absolutely don't.
We know, at the, at the Inland Row, they told us they could use the word retail, so they don't have to follow the same strict EPA and motion guidelines.
I'm, I'm sorry, did you, was that a question?
No, it was a statement.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt. Uh, thank you.
Can you state your name again for the record?
Yes, it's Kristen Butler, I'm Executive Director of Evergreen Woods, and I apologize, I might have neglected the north part of North Ramford, but we obviously are taxpayers in North Ramford. Regulatory-wise, the decisions that the town makes affect other regulatory agencies. We are regulated by the State of Connecticut. The State of Connecticut requires an evacuation slash emergency preparedness plan for anything that may impact the community. That is something that needs to be, must be presented by the town. So I, I just have to make that clear, that that is absolutely an expectation of the State of Connecticut. So please follow through with that.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Judith Wilcox. I am not only a resident of this town, or a longtime resident of this town, but I'm also a business owner with a private practice. Part of the practice that I do, and have done for years, is crisis response on contract throughout the State of Connecticut and into other places. When I attended the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission the other night, I, as a retired member and a charter member of the Inland's Ford, a retired member of the Fire Department, I found Chief Seward's presentation, as usual, impeccable, but there was one little issue that I think very few people caught, when the lovely woman on the committee, whose name I don't know, asked, "How would a fire start in those tanks?" And Bill went into a long explanation of how safe they were, and then with two words, said part of what I wanted to say there, but could not, because there was no comment, and he said the words, "criminal activity." For a very long time, I have been doing crisis response, very long, I went through the experience of trying to get school districts around the State of Connecticut to be crisis-prepared for potential shootings, before Columbom. I responded to Newtown, I responded to the Boston Marathon bombing as a contract clinician. And because of my background as an EMT for many years, and hanging with the Fire Department, and doing critical incident stress debriefings for emergency personnel, businesses, and organizations around the State of Connecticut, when I looked at this situation, I said, "Oh my God, what are we inviting? Do we have tunnel vision, in the same way we had tunnel vision about violence hitting the schools, and the lack of preparedness?" One of the issues that came up in the planning and zoning was the fact that they had no clue what their security plan was. It is hard for me to imagine that a small business like theirs can have the kind of security plan that will protect us from some lunatic, homegrown terrorist, or some imported terrorist, from taking a look at our location and saying, "Blowing up those tanks would immobilize the shoreline." Criminal activity was the glitch in there in Bill Seward's presentation, but it was the primary consideration in my mind when I went to that meeting the other night, because I know what happens to people when they go through traumatic incidents. I know how long it takes for a community to recover. I've responded to the schools here when we had two deaths by hanging, one in the middle school, one in the high school, within a matter of a month of each other. I know what it takes to help a community recover psychologically from something like that, and I think we have tunnel vision. If we don't look at this business and those propane tanks as having high potential for criminal activity, that is going to sideline many people for many years to come. If you look at some of the incidents that have happened with propane explosions, tank explosions of the same size, you will see some of the human factor there, not just the property loss, not just the loss of lives, but the trauma imposed on a community. We are not prepared, our police department is a small department. If they're responding to the incident, and our, our Fire Department is responding to the incident, how are they going to evacuate Evergreen Woods at the same time? Yes, we have mutual aid, but that mutual aid, if it's a large explosion, is gonna be focused first on controlling that explosion and the hazmat scene. Please, 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 give consideration. I want all of you here to give consideration to this aspect, and tell others, I want our town council to do the right thing and give consideration to the long-range impact psychologically to our community if some insane individual who thinks they're part of ISIS or another terrorist organization, because they've been communicating with them online, or maybe they've gotten training somewhere, give consideration to the fact that we are close to New York City, we're close to New Haven, we're close to Hartford, we have an airport 10 minutes from here, and we're a quiet little community that's not gonna be on guard to something like this, and I'm not being paranoid, folks. Boston Marathon bombing was a perfect example. You know, I responded to 9/11 as well. Please, 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 give consideration to this. You know, I'm coming from a place of being an expert in traumatic stress, and responding to people who have been through traumatic events since Long Bion's Plaza. When I saw there was a need, and I went for special training. I've been a trauma expert for far longer than that.
I don't wanna cut you short, but can we stay on point, because there's a lot of people here, and...
Well, I think this is on point, and it is to the point of the welfare of all of you, and all of us, and all of the people who are not here. So give consideration.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Dudley Harrison, I'm a lifetime resident, my ancestors settled this town. I got a question from Mr. Lawyer over here. Would you project that our petition will go up the vote? Will we get it on the November ballot?
Well, the county council has 30 days from its filing, so today's the first day. I expect to make a judgment, in my opinion, as to whether or not the council has the authority to carry out your wishes, I've said it several times, by the end of this week. The council will have another meeting between now and 30 days, and you will also have an opportunity at that time to address the council on the merits, or on your criticism of anything I, of any opinion I may have made. So, you will have, you will know my response in terms of whether or not this body can help you, very shortly. It'll be a public document way before the next council meeting, which will be held within the next 30 days.
Well, listen, if I say, I'm a simple man, and I'm damn sure to patience, we took up a petition to put this to a vote and put it to bed, all right? Now we're getting a lot of legal beagle stuff, the council don't want enough crap, right? They're, they've been dodging it for as long as it's come out. What's going on here? My opinion is, we have citizens for the petition for a vote, and if the vote rules out, that ends it. We don't need to rely on three or four zoning people, we don't need to go out of damn houses. Now what's all this legal talk? What are we not about?
I don't have the heart to put out there.
Well, I'm sick of lawyers, all right? I'm tired of it.
Dudley, please keep it respectful. Dudley, please, please keep it respectful.
Look, I'm sick of your action, too. And why is he sitting here? He's a fraud. I told you two weeks ago, you'll never get my vote again.
Good.
You're gonna go to something arresting you.
Good.
All right? Like nobody's here, this legal beagle crack, this council man, what the hell are you sitting there for?
I think this, uh, Marshall Temple, I live at 315 Nonchill Road, which is really close to this area that you're talking about, so my... So my concern is not for my property value, my concern is not for beating up on the council because I respect that these people volunteer their time and month after month after month put in a lot of time, and a lot of us don't volunteer to put ourselves on the line. So I respect that. What I'm here to say, because I feel it's my civic obligation, is to say, if a handful of people can make such a huge decision on behalf of this entire community and put my health and safety at risk, then I want to know what can we do going forward so that there are safety nets in place, so that things can get published better and more timely. I heard about this act in fact. I mean, I don't live under a rock, I'm pretty active in town, I do a lot of things. So I was shocked to hear that it was a done deal and that I had not heard anything about it. I'm very close to the area, so I don't understand why. And if my property is just outside of the legal notice, I remember getting over the years letters notifying me of the change when the old dump broke, when they wanted to put a road in there, put other things back there, when they wanted to develop back there. I received notice when Evergreen Woods was going in. So I've received notices over the years for other things. I can't believe that something as big as this, and that has been so widely publicized in Guilford and Clinton and other places, it's not good for those towns. Why were we not more cautious before a decision was made? So my comments to you are, what the heck's going on? I don't understand. I don't want to beat up you, John, because I think you do a great job for the town of Hartford. I don't want to beat up on anybody on the council. And now comments are running rampant and rumors are running rampant. Somebody told me two members of that committee were dismissed.
Yeah.
Dismissed because they sort of had a different view than other people on board. So, and those kinds of things are not good for a community as decent and honest and as good as the town of Hartford works. So I hope that in the process of all of this, we can do something to clean up our act. And that's Goodtino, 63 Glenwood Road. As you guys know, Glenwood Road is right behind Sailor Road. I've been over now 19 years. I've lived in town for almost 50 years. My family's all in town. I'm very disappointed that this has actually come this far. I really thought that the well-being of the townspeople would have maybe come into more consideration than it did. I'm really concerned about my house, my family, all my friends. I know this nice woman over here was talking about bad things, bad people, but there's other ways that something can happen over there. There's too many other variables that can go wrong, improper hookups from the tanks to the trucks, hose problems, nozzle leaks, truck problems, older trucks, just human error could be a very big problem. Not terrorists, just everyday human error. Once that gas leaks out, you know, propane hoovers low. There's guys working over there, yes, it's an industrial park, but there's families right behind it. Somebody goes out to have a cigarette on a break, drops it on the ground. If there's a leak of any sort, that is a direct line right back to those tanks. Doesn't have to be the tank itself that's the problem, it could be any other variable. I'm really concerned because I don't think what was taken. I mean, our town, yes, we have a volunteer fire department, yes, I give them a lot of credit for what they do, I give you guys a lot of credit for what you do. But there's no way, if there's a problem with those tanks, that you're going to get from the 911 call to the volunteers to the firehouse, dressed down near, inadequately supplied or cooled down, keep those tanks cool enough not to explode. And you know, once they do explode, within 60 seconds, everything within a quarter to a half a mile is gone. And that would be me, and my family, my neighborhood, my friends, everything, everything in that area. There's other tanks there. So once one goes, they're all going to go. There's a gas station on the corner. It's going to be just a domino effect. I really, really wish you guys would consider and think hard about what you're really putting the townspeople through here. The stress, the distress, I don't know how you can evacuate Evergreen Woods and also cure for the townspeople. My road, Glenwood Road, doesn't have fire hydrants. We have a fire pond. So how are you going to pump that water from the pond to all the houses? God forbid something happens. And whose house are you going to pick to wet down first? I really hope you guys think hard and long about what we're doing in America. I really, really hope.
My name is George Miller, I live at the Free Dogwood Road here in North Hartford. This is a pretty town with a unique feature. We have a reservoir. And because of the reservoir, that poses some problems moving around this town. Where I am, near the reservoir, up Sea Hill Road, I'm stuck. If something happens, I can't get out. I could, of course, hop the fence, swim the reservoir. But to be serious, I can't get out, and neither can anyone else up there. Now, there are two people in this room who are emergency services people, and we pay them and they are sworn to go toward the problems. But your evacuation plan cannot but have an awful lot of people who live in this community, if they are going to try to get out, they have to go toward your problem. Which not only is difficult for the emergency responders, but it puts all of us at risk. You cannot come up with an evacuation plan for a very large segment of this community. It just can't possibly happen. And we're not talking about necessarily the totality of 60,000 gallons, but even something less will require assistance force. So while Evergreen Woods may have to have an evacuation plan, so will an awful lot of my friends and neighbors. And I don't think you've given any consideration to that. And I thank you for your time.
We'll make this very quick. Heidi Huber, 81 Bailey Drive. I think it's pretty clear, after being here this evening, that most of us, and not all of us, are against this proposal. I also like to know, I don't know who to address this to, but how do we prevent conflict of issue items happening in the future? I think that somebody who owns property that's on the council should not be able to vote on something like that.
Water, please, not respect for her, she's speaking.
Can I just answer that question for you?
Many of us would love to hear that answer.
First of all, the council has not voted on anything to do with this issue. They have taken no votes. They are not responsible for whatever the amendment is to the regulation. I understand that folks here want to have that somehow turned back, walk it back, repeal it. The town council and the members of the town council have not voted on a thing that has to do with where you are right now. As far as individual members on the town council whom you may feel have a conflict, the council votes in the aggregate. No individual member has any power. Even the mayor has no more power than an individual council person. And under our charter, even if there were a conflict, the only obligation is for that conflict to be disclosed. And then the individual can still go ahead and vote. But of course, in this case, no one on this council has ever voted on anything you're talking about right now. That's, that may be part of the problem, it's not, it may be part of the misconception or the misinformation. This council has not had anything to do with the situation right now. I understand that you're coming to the council to see if the council can help you unravel this, and that's a different issue, but...
Well, if things had been done differently, if we had been notified, as people have all said, if we knew about all this stuff up front, we wouldn't even be here tonight. This never would have come this far. A couple of meetings that we were never even really knew about until after it happened. Oops, by the way, you missed it. And you know, frankly, I find some of the demeanor of the members up here tonight deplorable. Okay? Asking, texting away. I mean, this gentleman asks us to be polite and listen and be courteous. That's not courteous behavior, okay? You're not displaying what you're asking of us. That's not fair, okay? Do what you're asking us to do, be courteous, okay? Stop texting, stop whispering.
I spoke before, and my 78-year-old brain is a little slow. Tonight on television, Television News, our government is starting to bite their fingernails over possible terrorists, ISIS, American citizens that have gone betrayed by ISIS, and they don't know who they are or how they're going to get back in the country, but they don't know how they're going to stop them. Now, this tells you something where this terrorist business is going. And it doesn't take much, much of a weapon by somebody to blow those tanks. Not that they're going to be prime targets, better targets, but who knows? And I'm very concerned about this, and I'm very disgusted with our town government here because we're getting a big runaround on this thing. You got a petition, get it on the ballot, never mind all this juggling, I don't know what all this legal stuff is, but I'm a man of, boom. What can I tell you? And I don't know what was all you people here. We got a little bit of a buddy system going, good, I think. I got my say.
Thank you. All right. Now, does anybody else have anything other than, I think we've heard the gist of the room, is there anybody else who has any other they would like to add to this?
My name's Al Collette, I live at Bailey Road in Bailey Drive. And C.C. Mayor, with all due respect, you have a credibility issue. You stand up here and you're acting like I don't know control, I don't know what's going on, I don't know how much taxes they're getting, I don't know how they came into town. But videotape's a funny thing. You know, you watch, well, I mean, early on, you're like, I don't know nothing, I don't see anything, I don't know how this all happened. But the video is a funny thing because when you watch the planning and zoning, the first time it's introduced, the commissioners are, "Well, we don't know, what about safety? Well, public, what about public participation?" And you ask to speak, and everyone goes see this on the Turket Times. And you, you know, all but the cheerleader outfit, you're like, this is the best thing I've ever done, I implore you guys to do the safety study, I implore you, I've looked at the economics, I've looked, it's a great idea. And that would be fine if it were true, but I don't believe it is true.
It is true.
So you did do the economic study, you do, I mean, what?
I didn't do an economic study, I did ask questions about safety.
No, 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 you said it, I'm saying, you testified, if you want to say something, I'd have to respond, but watch the video, it's not, I'm not saying this.
I said I was in favor, I did.
And you said this is great for economic development.
It is great, good for economic.
How do you know you didn't know what taxes and taxes, I mean, how do you know it's for economic development if you haven't been one calculation on taxes?
What you're doing to our town right now, would any business want to move here?
Well, you have a credibility issue, and I don't know how, Yul Carnegie says when you're wrong, admit it quickly and emphatically.
I have, I have, I have said I have supported business coming to town, I ran on that platform, I have implored businesses to move here. Yes, I went to planning and zoning and said, "I would like to see this business move into town." Has anybody drove down?
You said it was my idea, you said this was my idea, bringing them in. I reached out to them.
I did reach out.
And the charrette on June 2nd, when the Economic Development Corporation was there in planning the zoning, and Nancy Klaus says, "I thought we were going to talk about the tanks." You're like, "No, this is not the place for it."
That was not, that was not the venue, no, not at all. That was never on.
You said, or some of the council said, "Why should Economic Development Corporation, or why should they know about this at all?" I mean, and you're, but you're saying it's an economic development issue, so, but you know, I don't know who said it, but it's definitely a runaround, and it's, you know, there's not going to be any answers from you.
It's not a runaround, not a runaround at all.
My name is Walter Zaleski, I live at 21 Pine Hollow Road. Walter Zaleski, 21 Pine Hollow Road. And I should say concerns as everyone else here, as far as the storage tanks go. However, I've been in the compressed gas business for 42 years before retiring. I've been in a gas explosion, I know what they're like. My mixed concern is for the trucks, the 6,000, 7,000, 11,000 gallon bombs on wheels that you're going to be sending down Route 22, Nacho Road, or Route 80, or whatever other route that you're going to take. Now, that puts them right in front of Evergreen Woods and two blocks away from my house, so.
School buses.
Yeah, school buses.
There are three daycare centers.
If we have a problem with Valley Road, where it comes up to 22, you can't see either direction, it's very difficult to get out. We've got a 7,000, even a 7,000 gallon tanker coming down there, and they're doing 40, 45 miles an hour, you're trying to get out of there in the winter tanks, you're not going to get out of there, there's going to be an accident, and that's where the problem lies. And propane is one half times the weight of air, so it's going to stay there, it's going to linger there. It doesn't dissipate quickly, it will dissipate, but not very quickly. So that's my main concern.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is T.J. Karowski, and I live on Normal Drive. I grew up in this town, I saved for probably 10 years to buy a house, I could have went anywhere I wanted, and I decided to stay in North Hartford. I go to work every day, work really hard to pay a mortgage, now I'm paying possibly to work my butt off to pay for a mortgage for a house that's in a blast zone. This isn't what I signed up for. I didn't sign up for now, God forbid this thing passes, now my kids are outside playing baseball, living in the ER or whatever, I start hearing sirens. Boy, are they going that way or are they going that way? This is a problem. If I hear a little rumble, it's middle of August, hopefully that's done, if it's not, my kids now we have to run inside. I mean, this whole thing is just ridiculous, there's no common sense to it. Even if it's $80,000, the amount of, the amount of homes that you can just, it's kind of collect, collect, like somebody said, whatever it is, $10 or whatever. I mean, I think some simple math, it's $16 for 5,000 houses, $16. That's $80,000. Now I'm hearing 30 cents a pound. This is crazy, this is absolute madness. That's it.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who has a different view or would like to express a different opinion? If not, I want to close public session so we can move on to our regular council meeting.
I have one more question, please. One question?
Can you make it quick? Can you make it quick?
We've been here an hour talking about this issue, what we hear from the town council is simply, you don't know what you can do about it. My question is, as is these, tell us what we can do to stop this. Answer that question. We don't want to hear you say you can't help us. We want to hear you say you're going to help us find a way to put this thing to vote. We don't want to hear the charter says a referendum only applies to the ordinance and measures of the town council, but not to the planning and zoning. That's ridiculous. The power of the initiative, the power of our referendum is meant to apply to all of the goings on in this government. There are four exceptions, those are the four that we can't bring up on referendum. Getting you guys on off the council, the taxes, I don't know, there are two others. That implies that, it applies to everything else the government does. So, here's a question. How do we stop this? I want that answer from you. People in North Ramford voted you people to protect their interest. Now protect the interests of this town. Give your question. You don't want a bomb in North Ramford, period. Now, T.J., bring it to a halt, and if you're smart, this is a really graceful way for you guys to get out of under this thing. Because the truth is, if you don't, you're all going to get voted off the next time around. Hey, people! You're not going to survive the next session. People on the petition, everybody said, you know, we need to organize, and if we don't get our way on this, then we need to cash through this government. Because this government is not paying attention to what the people want. So that's a question. How do we stop it? You can't do it? Tell us how we can do it. You're the lawyer. Find a way to stop this. That's your job. You're the lawyer. Either you're protecting the interests of this town, the property and people and their lives, or you're not. If you're not, you need to be fired. If you are, then you tell us what the proper legal way to stop this is. Don't parse the, the, don't parse the statutes, the charter, the code, and tell us, these regulations do not apply, so you can't use a referendum. I'm sorry, sir. The referendum, the power of initiative, the power of referendum, as I read it, according to the charter, and I think the people who wrote the charter probably intended that it applies to everything except those four exceptions. We don't have any issue with those exceptions. So, I'm quite certain that that pretty well sums up the issue of this town meeting tonight as far as these people are concerned.
Thank you very much.
My name is Aaron Kaplan, I'm here at Hill, I've been up here for 40 years. I've really never had the opportunity to come before this council, so I do want to thank the fans for listening to us. Mayor Kandelora, you mentioned the two other applications that the facilities you're considering.
I wasn't considering.
Who was considering?
They were considering.
Where were they?
There were, one was down Siro Road, another lot, and there was a location somewhere in Northford.
Two others in other?
One in Northford and another lot on Siro Road.
Okay, and why, if you might ask me, why was this location selected?
My understanding, and that's from going to the meetings, the lot on Siro Road was closer to the residential, this one had a fire hydrant right in front of it, and the location was better.
I don't think, I don't think the public here came here to, you know, assassinate everybody's character or your abilities to run the town. You know, I think if you are new to the town, and I was just wondering if you often, seeing the pictures that everybody, that they were passing out, and, you know, take a roll ball of who's here, so if you don't mind my asking, if you would just say yes or no, if a house would be, if this was being built, there are homes that you're going to build, what would you say? Would you buy that property and build a home next to this? Would you, Mr. Warren? Would you?
Probably not.
Would you?
No.
Would you?
No, it's a 1,000 gallon tank. They're behind everybody's yard, I would.
Would you?
I would. That's a 1,000 gallon tank in somebody's yard.
Would you let your daughter buy a house, your family buy a house next to this?
If you drive around town, you're going to see those in past the backyard.
That's not answering my question. My question is, would you allow your daughter to buy a house?
Sir, you can't, you're not going to engage the council, please make your statement, okay? I'm not asking for order, please.
You made a comment about this fire hydrant down there. Fire hydrant is of no use if there is an explosion. The likelihood is somebody mentioned that this blowing up is very remote, but there's always the possibility. There's three gas stations, you have 60,000 gallons worth of propane exploding, and you got 139 and Route 80, gas station blowing up, you've got Dexter Mark over there on Route 80, pitch that in there, it's blowing up, you've got Eric Greenwood down the road.
Don't yell from the audience, sir, that's a third time, I'll have you removed, okay? Please don't yell from the audience. I don't, please do not yell from the audience.
So, I don't think the public here is, is here to be vindictive against your office anyways, I don't think, I'm not. I'm just concerned because I live a mile from there, and I have same concerns about evacuation process as, as my neighbor and others who live in the median area. But my concern is this, you've all seen this, of the four people I've asked, three of which said, no, they would not move there. And I'm a customer of J.J. Sullivan, but I don't need J.J. Sullivan. There's other, a few people that I can buy from. But if you would not live and buy property next to this bomb, then why should you enlist J.J. Sullivan to buy property or rent property from this gentleman? If you go on YouTube and you see this explode in life, you would think twice. YouTube has a two-minute explosive scenario, and they have a close-up of something very similar to this, where the vapors are slowly burning, and the camera drew back, and then this thing blew up, and this is only 1,000 gallons of propane. So I beg your difference with anybody on the committee and the council here, that you would buy a piece of property or have your immediate family buy a piece of property next to this. So again, you know, I thank you for your kind, but again, as everybody else here would consider the application for J.J. Sullivan, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Michelle Nelson, I'm a person in Chileroom. I just have one quick question. Who puts in place the members of planning and zoning?
Town council.
The town council puts in place the members of planning and zoning.
It goes to RTC and the DTC, they recommend to the town council.
The recommendations of both committees come from the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town Committee. They send it to the town council, and then we appoint them.
She said...
She said that the recommendations for boards and commissioners come from the respective parties, the Democratic Town Committee party and the Republican Town Committee party. They make the recommendations to the town council, and then the appointments come before the town council to then pass. The recommendations initially come from the Democratic and the Republican Town Committees.
But the ultimate decision is at the town council.
Correct.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
All right. Doug, I've already had, I've got to close this session, we need to move on to town business.
This is Whitworth.
Yes.
You were on the committee, I think you were around when they formed the new charter for the council.
I was a newspaper editor then.
Look, you were willing to. Now, I've got something that's stuck in my mind ever since that come around, I wasn't that close to it, but at some point, it was brought up, that the council and boards and stuff should have equal representation from both ends of town. Now, I've got a question. Have we been doing that? Because as I see this situation, not that they need to have a concern, because they got a lot of protection on the other end of town, and, and the guys on zoning, I know one guy lives in North Ramford, all right, but the other two or three or whatever's on there, what's majority?
Right now, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, a couple, two of them are from Northford, and I think, I think there's two Democrats, two Republicans, and maybe there's three Republicans, I don't know.
I don't, I don't care, Democrat or Republican, but I want to know what end of town is being represented.
They're from both ends.
They could equal, if council can't be equal, we've got none.
There's only five on there, so it's...
Or you've got a five-four. But, and this council, where is this council all these days? Everybody live in North Ramford, or we got some in Northford, what's in the house, a split?
We got one.
I've been asking this question for a long time, nobody will answer.
I think it's a five-four.
Five, if it's a five-four, well, that's what, that's what it has to be. And I don't want to set up trouble with Northford, but, but there's always been a big battle between Northford and North Ramford. This goes back in the 20s when my grandfather was a select man, and he was always having trouble with the Northford and, you know, because he was going to Ramford. They did have old George Dogger, he was like a second select man, and worked great, but this has been an odd one thing. And, and I, I just smell a lot of dirt in this whole beer. And, and I'm sorry, I can't trust the council, I can't trust someone. And where the hell is this town going? Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. I'll take one more, and then we have to get to town business.
My name is Tony Ventura, and I live on Water River, where you are. The mayor is my neighbor. I just have one question. If this comes to the town council, let's say, some, something happens, everything we do doesn't work out, I wonder, would Mr. Fucy exempt himself from voting? And if so, who would take his place? And how would this work? After all, he does have a financial interest in the situation. I'm not saying, I'm not saying it was wrong buying the property, it's led, worth a little less now, so is everything. But, but I'm just wondering, in legalities, should he be asked to be exempt because he has a financial interest in this, and then who would take his place?
No one would.
Nobody would?
No, it would just be, if he recuses himself from the vote, if it goes to a vote of the council, he just recuses himself, he doesn't vote, and it's up to the other eight members of the council.
But it...
Whoever would be there that night.
If he doesn't excuse himself, do we have the right to ask him to excuse himself?
Yeah, he would abstain, is what you're saying, from the vote. He would abstain from the vote, is what you're saying. It's like this evening, Council Caprio's not here, we have business to take care of, you know, his vote won't be counted, he's not here, we, you know, we have a quorum to move on. And in this case, you know, yeah, with, he would abstain entirely from that vote.
I just wondered, because, Mr. Fucy, during these proceedings, you appeared very arrogant, and I thought you were very bored, and you were saying to yourself, come on, come and get me. Well, I think the town is coming to get me. That's all.
All right. We've gone for over an hour, and I really, you know, wanted everyone to speak, so we need to move on to town business. So I thank you all for coming, I hear you all, I think everyone on the council hears you, and thank you for all coming out this evening. Thank you. All right, I'm moving on to item 11, resignations and appointments. Item A, resignation, Phil Dollmeyer for Permanent Project Building Committee.
Mayor, I know we hit it really great, we accepted resignation.
We're still in session, please be as quiet as possible, thank you.
Andy, why don't you take five minutes? Let, let, at least as far as I get to this position, petition. What if there are five?
Sure.
We have resignations and appointments.
Resignation, Phil Dollmeyer for Permanent Project Building Committee. It was moved by Deputy Mayor Whitworth in the beginning.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Fucy, roll call.
We know that, we know that, so.
Mayor Kandelora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fuanin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Roos?
Yes.
Item B, appointment, Deborah Purnear to Permanent Project Building Committee.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Angeloni, roll call.
Mayor Kandelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth? Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fuanin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Roos?
Yes.
Appointment of Liz Caplan to the Economic Development Commission as a regular member termed to expire 12/31/2015.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Fuanin.
I just have a question. We had received an email from Counselor Hodgson in regards to this appointment, and in his email to us, he had said that it would be as an alternate member, and that's what we had passed at a previous meeting, and I was just wondering what the change has been.
Well, I, I did speak to Dan Arman, and Liz, maybe you can further it, but, um... Does that know there was a memory at large?
Essentially, I'll, I'll try to make this brief. When I came to the economic development meeting back in June, with anticipation of hopefully getting on in Eric's place, I wanted to be the voting member. So I came to educate myself to the, how the economic development committee was currently working, because I served in 2005. There was a gentleman there by the name of Sacco, who was incredibly knowledgeable. So at that meeting, I said to everybody in the room, if, if Mr. Sacco is willing to come on the Economic Development Commission, I didn't care what party he was from, I just thought he would be of wealth of information for the town, which is the point of this, I gladly would be the alternate. So it was my understanding, Mr. Sacco, I didn't know who he was affiliated with, as I said, was coming on as a voting member. It came to my understanding, not directly, that Mr. Sacco is not interested in becoming a member of the Economic Development Commission. Therefore, I would like to be the voting member and not the alternate, because there is not another person, it is my desire, it was always my desire, that I saw somebody more knowledgeable than myself in this position. He didn't want to do it, so therefore, I wanted to go back to my original intention, which was to be the voting member, as nominated from my town committee to come to the council level.
But it's my understanding that the Economic Development Commission, Committee, is made up, it's very specific as to who the members are, and there's, on the three members that are members at large, one is a realtor, one is from the banking or marketing, and then there's just a member at large. So, and I believe, I thought Dan Arman was the member at large out of those three.
What was Eric's position before he was on?
I'm, I'm not sure.
So he's a doctor, Dan is in another industry, and another member, a current member, was a former school teacher. And I, I understand why the committee was set up, in order to have people in the industry, knowledgeable people in the industry, I understand that, and I am in no way disrespecting that, I get that, because when I was on in 2005, that was not the case, there were not these parameters set up. So, it is obviously the council's decision, but you have someone that is responsible, that served on numerous town committees, and at best, you do not have someone necessarily who fulfills that specific criteria. So would you rather have a committee not operate fully, or wait until you possibly might get somebody?
Liz, correct me if I'm wrong, but you've been involved somewhat with this economic development as it's been going?
Yes, since June. You know, I went to the meeting in June, I did serve before, as I said, in 2005. You know, I went to the meeting in June, I did serve before, as I said, in 2005. So I am familiar with the workings of economic development. Although I may not fit under a specific criteria, I am there to take Eric's place, so whatever place he served, I would like to take his place.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess my question would be to the town attorney then, because it is specified in the charter as far as the makeup of the EDC. So if, if we aren't meeting that, do we still go?
If I may, I'm not as reliable with what those criteria are either. So, I mean, I may not, you may have other members that don't fulfill whatever criteria it is that we need to fulfill.
I don't think it's the charter, I think it's probably an ordinance, the commission. I would, I'll look at it, I would say this, that I don't think you can find more enthusiasm from anybody on that committee, and it's very hard to...
I don't argue that.
You know, so if I can construe it liberally, I'm going to construe it liberally to have a person like this be on that committee. But your point is well taken, we can't violate the ordinance.
Right, no, that's part of the charter, and I, I totally respect that.
Let me see what I can find here before the end of the meeting, maybe we can pass this for a moment.
So let me just table this for now, and we'll come back to it after John looks it up.
Okay. All right, so do I need a motion to rescind those motions, or just move on?
Yeah, I have one real quick question, what does at-large actually mean?
You're a big guy.
Say what?
You're all over the place.
You're all over, at-large.
That's a big day, definitely.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know, I believe one is chamber, one is banking, one is real estate, one's at-large, and I don't remember.
It means you could be from any...
And business.
Any aspect, you didn't have to fit.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
No, that's okay, but she, she said, she's coming.
Unfinished business, discussion in action, update to the defined benefit plan, nothing. Appointment of Tom Hibbert and Rosa as architect for TBS Root Project, tabled for the September 16, 2014 meeting.
Yeah, we need a motion, took this up, waiting for the state contractor, we're thinking about the state contract, it's now officially accepted by the state, so if the town council appoint comes as the architect for TBS.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to appoint Tom Hibbert and Rosa as architects for the TBS Root Project, and authorize the Permanent Project Building Committee to negotiate services and fees.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Okay, item C, request for reimbursement of supplies associated with the 1675 Box of Road.
I think so.
Is the total the 1,663, is that the total?
Yeah.
So what are we doing, Country Painting Hardware, is that what?
Yeah.
Well, no, there's another, there's, there's Lowe's, too.
Oh, yeah.
Is this the total? I'm not sure what all of it is.
Those are all the backup receipts, the total is 1,663.05, the paint was 969.44 from Country Painting Hardware.
I guess...
And then the other supply is 693.65.
No.
I got a, I got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted, I don't think mine.
Will you go for them to get it on?
Okay. I, I had a question. What works the best for you, Lynn, on, should we, should we pay Country Painting Hardware direct and pay you the rest, or? I mean, how do you want us to handle this?
Well, Country Painting Hardware, they don't use paint, so the paint portion, that's why I separated it out. You can feel free to reimburse them, since they put paint on the walls, or the pantry, everything else. And if you look, I was very fair, anything that I thought I could use, or I know I will be using in the future, when we do find out who the pantry, I did take off of it, so I think I was being fair.
Yeah, I was a question in bear, I wanted to know with, how you want it.
And you reverse the paint, I appreciate, I appreciate you paying the country paint back, and anything else you can pay back to Madge Mission.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we pay the paint section to Country Painting Hardware, and the other balance to Madge Mission.
So let's just put the amount in the motion, it's 969.44 to Country Painting Hardware, and 693.65 to Madge Mission.
All right, so that was moved by Counselor Rose, seconded by Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item 13, new business, discussion in action. Item A, popo, festival update, Roseanne Prezuski.
Anthony, we have that bittersweet, that's what's bittersweet.
She picked up 12 bittersweet.
Bittersweet is next, unfinished.
It's 12D.
Yeah.
Where is it?
It's 12D.
I don't have that.
Neither do I, what happened?
I don't have that.
Here, here, here.
How do we have a revised agenda?
It was in the folder.
I didn't get a chance to see, sorry. No wonder why, he said it was later on, I, I didn't even get a chance to look at it. Okay, item D, um, um, we're on item D now, which is the North Ramford Land Conservation Trust, 12 Bittersweet, it was left in our packet, at our desk.
Actually, when you, when you...
I brought it up before, but it was further down on the agenda.
Right, right, but if you read this, it looks like the land trust is requesting that we do a survey, but I'm pretty sure we had already said to do a survey.
Yeah, just to follow up, the discussion was, looking, doing a survey, there's a couple matters, one, what the cell tower was talking about, the, for non-产权 property, 12 Bitter Sweet Drive, for the GIS mapping, period, it was a crosstalk of 16 Bitter Sweet Drive on the town property, suggested was, see about doing a survey, we also talked about whether the, if something the land trust may be interested in or not, that's considered in account.
That's a consideration. But we got questions on the surveys, and basically, it was $1,500 every inch on property line, survey. Who, who did you get prices from? Navis and Young, Skoll Engineering, and the others.
Who was the low bid?
Navis and Young. And it was too hard to process, it would be broken down into, one, individual property line of survey, survey at least 25 feet on either side of properties, and see, verify if there is encroachment, how much, and then, potentially, if there is encroachment, we're maybe interested in doing a property switch or adjustment, or maybe, I don't know what, but I, I wrote it that way, too, that they would prepare a map to do that. It's... Well, I, I would think that at this point, we would want a survey, and wouldn't want to, we don't want to, until we see the map. Absolutely. There's no sense having them do something hypothetical. No, we, we got, we got the cost on that, it's $1,500 to a property line. Now, which line, they, they need to do, the two lines there? They, it's basically the line, we have the, share property line, so it goes around the quadrant. The 432.49 feet? Yeah. So that line, and then, and then you figured the first 130 feet off, to the right of this town property, you figure that's okay? No, they could do that, too, they could do that, see bordering the property line. So then, so they're going to do about 562 feet of bounty line, do an A2 standard? Yes. An A2 standard, there's a bounty property line between 12 and 16. I just got a question for the town attorney, has, has anything like that ever happened? I mean, what, what's the course of action? It looks like there's an addition that's on with Ariel. At the beginning, Ariel is a more or less, so that's, I'm not sure, it certainly looks like it, maybe on, with land trust to walk it, this summer, I was in it, to go with that, they look by property line, property corners, we have to get those corners established. Then we make that determination, we have to bring back what to do, until we have that survey done, we would know what the, instead of the, because it's possible. Okay. The other item, too, is, it's something where discussion, we do have to identify a funding source, and I've talked to Anthony about that. If there's an indication, council, we can, we can come back with a suggested motion in the next meeting. To begin, like I said, there's really the initial thing to determine how much encroachment there is, then it's, if there's encroachment, what do we do about it? And then, the other issue is, is something the town does want to offer to the land trust or not?
Right. I thought that's what we've been saying all along.
I don't think the, I, I, well, the land trust will have to get back to us, I talked to a couple members today, and I don't think they're interested in it, but, they certainly aren't interested with this, with somebody's house encroaching on it. We have to find out. So, again, I mean, we have to go forward, you need a motion to, for you guys to come up with funding for this, or what? I would take contingency appropriation, next, next meeting, do it now, life members easier for it, money to rock it down.
Let's just get it done.
Let's just do it. Yeah. Get it done. I mean, I, I think we should get it done, I'm sure that the people would like to know the boundaries, too.
I'd like to make a motion that we make an appropriation from contingency for...
1,500?
Is it the 1,500 and the 750?
1,500, that's what we need right now, we're sure that they're ready to vote.
Yeah.
Second step, we need to go back on the other, that we, we don't know if we need to do the second part of the gap.
Okay, so I'd like to make the motion, and is it to Navis and Young? Is that who?
That was the low, uh...
Is there a low bid?
Yeah, we, from contingency, to do the survey for 12 Bitter Sweet Drive.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, will you go back to C, 11C?
Oh, yes, appointment of Liz Kaplan, the Economic Development Commission, I do have a motion on the floor by Counselor Diamond and Counselor Fawnin.
Okay, and the town attorney has looked up, and the economic development commission, because of the wording, it says it shall, and it lists how the members are, and it says one member from the business community, one member from the Chamber of Commerce, or a designate as recommended by the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And so, in conferring with the town attorney, he said that would be most likely the position as to how to get Liz Kaplan onto EDC, since she is such an eager member to be on. So, so we would have to table tonight until the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors would make the motion to, to have her as a... And that would satisfy.
We already have a change in motion. For your director.
Oh, okay. Joanne says there's already a member from the Chamber of Commerce on.
The only one, the only one we can put on is the commercial, first one.
The business community?
Yes.
The North Ramford Business Community?
Yes.
John, is this an, like an ordinance, or something?
Yeah, it's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance, and it says the members shall, and we focused up, so with the word shall, the...
Yeah, it's an ordinance, and the language is mandatory, and you're saying that we do have a member from the Chamber of Commerce on there. The only thing that's open is a member from the business community.
The first one, what is it, the commercial?
No, business community.
One member from the North Ramford Business Community.
But, but if Joan Tudor is commercial real estate, couldn't she fall under three members from community at large, and she would satisfy the commercial real estate, or commercial development background?
I have to look at the membership that were there, because they're in the council's office.
I just think we need to fill this position, I mean, we have a lot, we're out with EDC.
Well, when we got the memo from Eric, he said Liz Kaplan was going on as an alternate member, that's what, that's why we put her on.
Yeah, but that was because there was another person that I think was going to go on there.
I need to try to figure this out, if we could table it for tonight. What about if we put her on as the alternate?
That's what we're putting, we have the option.
And then go to the Chamber of Commerce and get their endorsement, and move her up to a regular member, once they do that.
No, we have a chamber member on there already.
Joanne, what does that chamber member do? Could he, could that person qualify under one of the other categories? Okay, if the person who is nominated or designated on the Chamber of Commerce also could be appointed as, on the basis of a real estate background, she doesn't need to be appointed by the Chamber of Commerce, so if we could...
Well, they just put, if they do that, they just put another chamber.
Well, they could designate anybody they wish, it doesn't have to be a member of the chamber.
Just a member of the chamber.
No, it says, or a designate, or a designate as recommended, but it doesn't have to be...
The board wants, wanted a member of the board of directors. Why don't we, I don't need any chamber next week, why don't we table it in T with the same?
Okay. I mean, that's the best we can do right now, and I'll look at, you know, frankly, I don't want to torture the meaning here, but it's not like... I, I just want to see if there's any room in business community to interpret that as something educational, but more likely than not, it's going to, it's going to have to rely on the flexibility of the Chamber of Commerce, because the person they have on now will still stay on it, under category.
Vice chairman, like I said.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question? Is there someone from the business community on, on the chambers, or a designated business community person?
No, there isn't.
Okay, well, honestly, besides being an educator, I also am a member of the North Ramford Art Society, and I am a working artist as well. Do I own a full business? I don't, but I do sell my artwork. So I don't know, I know it's loose, but it is something where I would be happy if somebody bought my, you know what I mean? So it is a business, it isn't something, it is a regular occurrence, but I don't know if that would loosely fall under the auspices of this particular designation, just to get it done, because we have a lot of business to do. of business to do as a committee. And I would hate to see business held up because of that. But if you want to wait for the chamber meeting, I'm just, I'm just very confused as to, we have the, we have members that don't seem to fall under all of those designations and I'm just confused about that.
Let me, let me just say, say this, Liz. I call you Liz?
Sure.
Okay. We just got through with a very difficult public session.
Absolutely.
And much of what my comments related to was following the law.
Absolutely.
And interpreting it and trying to keep personal animus out of this thing.
Yeah.
So while I think, I share the opinion of the majority of all the council on this issue, I don't want to be in a position where you and I or the council are embarrassed by coming up with a, uh, interpretation, as one spokesperson said, that doesn't pass the sniff test. So although I'm not, although you make a good point, I mean, business community is a looser term than owns a business in town. So, but I think it would do, I think we would do well to see if we can get a designate, possibly from the Chamber of Commerce and also indicate that you are a member of the business community, at least in a loose sense. But I don't want to, I don't want to be in a position where...
No, I'm all about transparency and doing the right thing and dotting the i's and causing the t's because there should not be room for misjudgment. I totally respect that.
Let's explore the Chamber of Commerce. That's much more viable if they simply designate you.
Thank you. All right, so, um, I guess item C, we're gonna have to table. Do we have to vote on that? There was two motions on the floor.
They can just rescind the motions. Whoever made the motion.
Yeah. Withdraw the motion.
We'll withdraw the motion.
They both withdrew their motions, Councilor Diamond and Councilor Fawnin. Okay, new business discussion in action. Poco Festival update. Roseanne.
Well, they can't for the T D.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I assume everyone has received the report that Anthony, financial report Anthony SBC Don called to compile this as of September thirtieth. And within just these past few days, we have had several changes. Again, the figures are pretty close. We knew we did come out ahead, we needed the ten and fifteen thousand dollar mark. I did receive another bill in the office today and I don't know on your report, the hay rides, which were sponsored by the agricultural commission, were inadvertently put in under our revenue and they are not listed.
So how much was that?
It's not on there.
Okay, so it's off of here already?
Yeah. So if I'm open to any questions?
Um, do you have backup for some of these areas, like other contractual for sixty-three thousand? What does that, we usually get a backup as to what that number. And recreation, what's the twenty thousand dollars?
That's my salary. That's my salary. Twenty thousand clearly is my salary. The other contractual consists of things like the police department, the overtime on the police, not overtime, the charge for this, then we use the East Haven, Grandford, and North Haven as well as our...
Can we get a breakdown of that? Because we've always gotten a breakdown.
Of the other contractual?
Everything that's on here.
Okay.
Yeah, Ruthie, and I know you weren't here last year, but that was, this whole thing of other contractual really doesn't sit well well this. And, uh, you know what? I mean, the P V should be a pretty easy number to come up with.
Oh, I have, I have those figures wrote down.
So if you can break this sixty-three thousand or whatever it is down and tell us where that money went, that'd be great.
And technical supplies? What are technical supplies?
So technical supplies and other contractual?
Yeah, technical equipment.
Oh, yeah, technical supplies. Oh, technical supplies are the, uh, the potatoes, the toppings.
And then property development? I mean, it's not much, but what do we have for you?
Actually, there's a change to that that I had sent a memo over to Anthony. The property development is, they put a water line, a permanent water line in on the site now. And then actually, some of the money for technical supplies should be in the property development.
So every year?
They were like eleven thousand ninety-six dollars, eleven hundred ninety-six dollars. But that's a permanent water line, sinks. And, um, all I can say is that he sure was very pleased with having that done to the property.
Can you break that down? It was another report of everything.
Water line, okay, sure.
Anything that...
So technical supplies and, um, I can do equipment rentals, obviously, that's, you know, the refrigerating truck, uh, the tent rentals, that type of thing.
Yeah, but we generally get a breakdown on each of those categories after what?
So those three categories?
Oh, I guess all of them.
Did we do better last year than we did this year? Does anybody know?
Yes, yeah.
We did better this year.
No, no, we did better last year. Um, and probably part of the reason is because of the, we had rain.
Right.
Definitely had rain on that Saturday and it hurt not only us, but the amusement rides were down quite a bit on the Saturday for the rain. People didn't tend to show up till later in the afternoon, four or five o'clock, um, compared to last year where it was a beautiful weekend. We had the rain on the Thursday last year, which was the first year we had the four days, so it was hard to judge that. But those, last year was a better year, um, for bottom line than this year was.
My, I have twenty thirteen right here.
And what was your number for twenty thirteen?
Twenty-five something. Okay. I, I had from last year roughly twenty-five thousand. Another question? Okay, I'll get a breakdown of that.
Thank you, thank you so much, Ruth.
But if you truly look at it though, we paid you.
Right.
And have fourteen thousand.
Right, that's correct. You've always paid some, maybe not quite, you know, the same amount, but there was always some amount.
I'm just saying it's not, it's not as big a drop as you, as you think if you, you know, look at the added expense.
Correct, correct. All right, I'll get a breakdown for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, Dan Cosgrove Animal Shelter Quarterly Report. Donna, good evening.
Yes, we'll need to talk into that so the T D picks it up. It is working, not the town of us.
No.
Just make it fix as well as stays there.
Test, test, test.
All right, we're here. It's ridiculous. Okay, we have resignations and appointments. Resignation Phil Dollmeyer for Permanent Project Building Committee. It was moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth in the beginning.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilor Fucy, Roquon.
We know that, we know that.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Angelo?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item B, appointment Deborah Perneir to Permanent Project Building Committee.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Angelo, Roquon.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth? Councilor Angelo?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Appointment of Liz Kaplan to the Economic Development Commission as a regular member termed to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Fawnin.
I just have a question. We had received an email from Councilor Hudson in regards to this appointment and in his email to us, he had said that it would be as an alternate member and that's what we had passed at a previous meeting. And I was just wondering what the change has been.
Well, I, I did speak to Dan Arman and Liz, maybe you can further it, but, um... Because I know there was a memory of ours.
Essentially, I'll, I'll try to make this brief. When I came to the economic development meeting back in June, with anticipation of hopefully getting on in Eric's place, I wanted to be the voting member. So I came to educate myself to the, how the economic development committee was currently working because I served in two thousand and five. There was a gentleman there, but it named for Sacco, who was incredibly knowledgeable. So at that meeting, I said to everybody in the room, if, if Mr. Sacco is willing to come on the economic development commission, I didn't care what party he was from, I just thought he would be a wealth of information for the town, which is the point of this. I gladly would be the alternate. So it was my understanding, Mr. Sacco, who I didn't know who he was affiliated with, as I said, was coming on as the voting member. It came to my understanding, not directly, that Mr. Sacco is not interested in becoming a member of the economic development commission. Therefore, I would like to be the voting member and not the alternate, because there is not another person. It is my desire, it was always my desire, but I saw somebody more knowledgeable than myself in this position. He didn't want to do it, so therefore I wanted to go back to my original intention, which was to be the voting member, as nominated from my town committee, to come to the council.
But it's my understanding that the economic development commission, committee is made up, it's very specific as to who the members are.
Okay.
And there's, on the three members that are members at large, one is a realtor, one is from the banking or marketing, and then there's just a, a member at large. So, and I believe, I thought Dan Arman was a member at large out of those three.
What was Eric's position before he was on?
I'm, I'm not sure.
So he's a doctor, Dan is in another industry, and another member, current member, was a former school teacher. And I, I understand why the committee was set up in order to have people in the industry, knowledgeable people in industry. I understand that. And I am in no way disrespecting that. I get that, because when I was on in two thousand and five, that was not the case. There were not these parameters set up. So it is obviously the council's decision, but you have someone that is responsible, that served on numerous town committees, and at best, you do not have someone necessarily who fulfills that specific criteria. So would you rather have a committee not operate fully or wait until you possibly might get somebody?
Liz, correct me if I'm wrong, but you've been involved somewhat with this economic development as it's been going?
Yes, since June. You know, I went to the meeting in June, I did serve before, as I said, in two thousand and five. So I am familiar with the workings of economic development. Although I may not fit under a specific criteria, I am there to take Eric's place. So whatever place he served, I would like to take his place.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess my question would be to the town attorney then, because it is specified in the charter as far as the makeup of the EDC. So if, if we aren't meeting that, do we still go ahead?
If I may, um, I'm not familiar with what those criteria are either. So, I mean, I may not, you may have other members that don't fulfill whatever criteria it is that we need to fulfill. I don't think it's the charter, I think it's probably an ordinance rating.
Yeah.
The, uh, commission. I would, uh, I'll look at it. I would say this, that I don't think you can find more enthusiasm from anybody on that committee and it's very hard to...
I don't argue that.
You know, so if I can construe it liberally, I'm going to construe it liberally to have a person like this be on that committee. But your point is well taken. We can't violate the ordinance.
Right, no, according to charter, I, I totally respect that.
Uh, let me see what I can find here before the end of the meeting. Maybe we can pass this for a moment.
So can we just table this for now and we'll come back to it after John looks it up?
Okay. All right, so do I need a motion to rescind those motions or just move on?
Yeah, I have one real quick question. What does at large actually mean?
You're a big guy.
Say what? Need you all over the place.
You're all over, at large. I know, I believe one is chamber, one is banking, one is real estate, one's at large, and I don't remember.
It means you could be from any, any aspect. You didn't have to fit.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
No, that's okay, but she, she said she's coming.
Unfinished business, discussion in action, update to the defined benefit plan, nothing. Appointment of Tom Hibbert and Rosa as architect for T V S Root Project, tabled for the September sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen meeting.
Yeah, we need a motion. I took this up waiting for the state contractor, we're thinking that law, the state contract is now officially accepted by the state, so we go okay with the town council appoint Tom as the architect for T V S.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to appoint Tom Hibbert and Rosa as architect for the T V S Root Project and authorize the Permanent Project Building Committee to negotiate services and fees.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Councilor Angelo, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any further discussion? Roquon?
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Councilor Angelo?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yep.
Okay, item C, request for reimbursement of supplies associated with the sixteen seventy-five box and road.
Is the total the sixteen hundred sixty-three? Is that the total?
Yeah.
So what are we doing? Cutting the check? Like are we paying in hardware or is that what?
Yeah.
Well, no, there's another, there's, there's Lowe's too.
Oh, yeah.
Is this the total? I'm not sure what all of it is.
Those are all the backup receipts. The total is sixteen sixty-three oh five. The paint was nine sixty-nine forty-four from Country Paint Hardware. And then the other supply is six ninety-three sixty-five.
I got a, I got a couple of questions.
Yeah.
That I want, I don't mind.
Will you do for them to get it on?
Okay. I, I have a question. What works the best for you, Lynn? Should we, should we pay Country Paint and Hardware direct and pay you the rest or... I mean, how do you want us to handle this?
Well, Country Paint Hardware, they don't use paint, so the paint portion, that's why I separated it out. You can feel free to reimburse them since they put paint on the walls.
You can feel free to reimburse them since they put paint on the walls or the pantry. Everything else, and if you look, I was very fair, anything that I thought I could do, sort of, I know I will be using in the future. But when we did find out with the pantry, I did take off of it, so I think I was being fair.
Yeah, I was a question, is fair, I wanted to know what, how you want to...
Can you reverse the paint? I appreciate, I appreciate you paying the Country Paint back and anything else you can pay back to Mad Mission.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we pay the paint section to Country Paint Hardware and the other balance to Mad Mission.
So let's just put the amounts in the motion. It's 969.44 to Country Paint Hardware and 693.65 to Mad Mission.
All right, so that was moved by Counselor Rose, seconded by Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Ducey?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item 13, new business, discussion and action. Item A, Poco Festival Update, Roseanne Kraszewski.
Anthony, we have some Bittersweet, that's what's Bittersweet.
He picked up 12 Bittersweet.
Bittersweet is next on the unfinished.
It's item, it was 12D.
Yeah.
It's 12D.
I don't have that. I don't have that.
Here, here, here.
How do we ever revise the agenda?
Was it in the folder?
It was in the folder.
I didn't get a chance to see, sorry. No wonder why he said it was later on, I didn't even get a chance to look at it. Okay, item D. We're on item D now, which is the North Bramford Land Conservation Trust, 12 Bittersweet. It was left in our packet, at our desk.
Actually, when you...
I brought it up before, but it was further down on the agenda.
Right, right, but if you read this, it looks like the land trust is requesting that we do a survey, but I'm pretty sure we had already said to do a survey.
Yeah, just to follow up, the discussion was looking, doing a survey. There's a couple matters. One, with the cell tower, was talked about being put on the property of 12 Bittersweet Drive. For the GIS mapping, here, there's a crosstalk of 16 Bittersweet Drive on town property, suggested was to see about doing a survey. We also talked about whether the, something the land trust may be interested in or not. That's considered, counted, if that's a consideration. But we got questions on surveys, and basically, it was $1,500 every week on property line survey.
Who did you get prices from?
Navy's Young, School of Engineering, and the other consultants.
Who was the low bid?
Navy's Young. And it was too far to process, you know, going down into one additional property line survey, survey at least 25 feet on either side of properties, and to see, verify if there is encroachment, how much, and then potentially, if there is encroachment, you're maybe interested in doing a property switch or adjustment or maybe...
God bless you.
I don't know what, but I wrote it that way too, that they would prepare back to do that.
Well, I would think that at this point, we would want a survey and wouldn't want to, we don't want to, until we see the map, there's no sense having them do something hypothetical.
No, we got the cost on that. It's $1,500 to a property line.
Now, which line, they need to do, the two lines there?
They, it's basically the line, we have the...
The line that's...
Share property line, so what's around the corner.
The 432.49 feet?
Yeah.
So that line, and then you figured the first 130 feet off to the right of this town property, you figure that's okay?
No, they took through that too, they took through that, see bordering property line.
So then, so they're going to do about 562 feet of boundary line to an A2 standard?
Yes. An A2 standard is the top of the property line between 12 and 16.
I just got a question for the town attorney. Has anything like that ever happened? I mean, what's the course of action? It looks like there's an addition that's on with the aerial.
Again, aerial is a more or less, so that's, I'm not sure, it certainly looks like it may be on. With the land trust, we'd walk it this summer, I was there to go with them. They couldn't find property line, property corners even, so we have to get those corners established. Then we make that determination, we have to bring back what to do. So we have to have the survey done, we would know what the, if it's possible, proposals. The other item too is, it's up here for discussion, we do have to identify a funding source, and I talked to Anthony about that. If there's an invitation to council, we can come back and suggest a motion next meeting. Again, like I said, there's really an initial thing to determine how much encroachment there is, and it's if there's encroachment, what do we do about it? And then the other issue is, is something the town does want to offer to the land trust or not.
Right. I thought that's what we've been saying all along.
I don't think, well, the land trust will have to get back to us. I talked to a couple members today and I don't think they're interested in it, but they certainly aren't interested with it, with somebody's house encroaching on it.
We have to find out.
So, yeah, I mean, we have to go forward. You need a motion for you guys to come up with funding for this or what?
I would take contingency appropriation next meeting and do it now, if life, whatever's easier for it, might get rocking down.
Let's just get it done.
Let's just do it, yeah.
Get it done.
I mean, I think we should get it done, I'm sure that the people would like to know the boundaries too.
I'd like to make a motion that we make an appropriation from contingency for...
1,500, 500?
Is it the 1,500 and the 750?
1,500, that's what we need right now, to determine if they're ready to vote.
Yeah.
Second step, we need to go back on the other, that we, we don't know if we need to do the second part of the yet.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion, and is it to Navy's Young? Is that who?
That was the low, uh...
Their low bid?
Yeah.
$400 from contingency to do the survey for 12 Bittersweet Drive.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Whitworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Ducey?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, can we go back to seat, 11C?
Oh, yes. Appointment of Liz Kaplan to the Economic Development Commission. I do have a motion on the floor by Counselor Diamond and Counselor Fawnin.
Okay, and the town attorney has looked up in the economic development commission, because of the wording, it says it shall and it lists how the members are, and it says one member from the business community, one member from the Chamber of Commerce, or a designee as recommended by the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And so, in conferring with the town attorney, he said that would be most likely the position as to how to get Liz Kaplan onto EDC, since she is such an eager member to be on. So we would have to table tonight until the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors would make a motion to have her as the business member, and that would satisfy...
We already have a change in motion. We're a director.
Oh, okay. Joanne says there's already a member from the Chamber of Commerce on.
The only one we can put on is the commercial, first one.
The business community?
Yes.
The North Bramford Business Community?
Yes.
John, is this like an ordinance or something?
It's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance and it says the members shall be composed of, so with the word shall, I hate all this.
Yeah, it's an ordinance and the language is mandatory, and you're saying that we do have a member from the Chamber of Commerce on there.
If you remember, the only one that's open is a member from the business community.
The first one, what is this, the commercial?
No, business community.
One member from the North Bramford Business Community. Is it open?
But if Joan Tudor is commercial real estate, could she fall under three members from community at large and she would satisfy the commercial real estate or commercial development background?
I have to look at the membership number there, because they're in the council's office.
I just think we need to fill this position, I mean, we have a lot going on with EDC.
Well, when we got the memo from Eric, he said Liz Kaplan was going on as an alternate member, that's why we put her on.
Yeah, but that was because there was another person that I think was going to go on there.
Let me try to figure this out, if we could table it for tonight.
What about if we put her on as the alternate?
That's what we're putting, we have the only time.
And then go to the Chamber of Commerce and get their endorsement and move her up to a regular member once they do that.
No, we have a chamber member on there already.
Joanne, what does that chamber member do? Could that person qualify under one of the other categories? Okay, if the person who is nominated or designated by the Chamber of Commerce also could be appointed as, on the basis of a real estate background, she doesn't need to be appointed by the Chamber of Commerce, so if we could...
Well, they do have to just put another chamber in place.
Well, they could designate anybody they wish, it doesn't have to be a member of the chamber.
It has to be a member of the chamber.
Now, it says, or a designee as recommended, but it doesn't have to be...
The board wants one of the members of the board of directors. Why don't we, I have a meeting in the chamber next week, why don't we table it and keep it safe?
Okay. I mean, that's the best we can do right now, and I'll look at, you know, frankly, I don't want to torture the meeting here, but it's not likely. I just want to see if there's any room in business community to interpret that as something educational, but more likely than not, it's going to, it's going to have to rely on the flexibility of the Chamber of Commerce, because the person they have on now will still stay on it under category. Yes.
Can I ask a quick question? Is there someone from the business community on the, on the chamber, or is there a designated business community person?
No, there isn't.
Okay, well, honestly, besides being an educator, I also am a member of the North Bramford Art Society and I am a working artist as well. Do I own a whole business? I don't, but I do sell my artwork, so I don't know, I know it's loose, but it is something where I would be happy if somebody bought my, you know what I mean? So it is a business, it isn't something, it is a regular occurrence, but I don't know if that would loosely fall under the auspices of this particular designation, just to get it done, because we have a lot of business to do as a committee, and I would hate to see business held up because of that. But if you want to wait for the chamber meeting, I'm just, I'm just very confused as to, we have the, we have members that don't seem to fall under all of those designations, and I'm just confused about that.
Let me just say, Liz, I call you Liz.
Sure.
We just got through with a very difficult public session.
Absolutely.
And much of what my comments related to was following the law.
Absolutely.
And interpreting it and trying to keep personal animus out of this thing.
Yeah.
So while I think, I share the opinion of the majority, if not all, of the council on this issue, I don't want to be in a position where you and I or the council are embarrassed by coming up with a interpretation, as one spokesperson said, that doesn't pass the sniff test. So although I'm not, although you make a good point, I mean, business community is a looser term than owns a business in town. So, but I think it would do, I think we would do well to see if we can get a designee possibly from the Chamber of Commerce and also indicate that you are a member of the business community, at least in the loose sense, but I don't want to, I don't want to be in a position where we're...
No, I'm all about transparency and doing the right thing and dotting the i's and crossing the t's because there should not be trouble for misjudgment, and I totally respect that.
Well, let's explore the Chamber of Commerce, that's much more viable if they simply designate you.
Thank you. All right, so I guess item C, we're going to have to table, do we have to vote on that? There was two motions on the floor.
They can just rescind the options. Whoever made the motion...
Yeah, withdraw the motion.
We'll withdraw the motion.
They both withdrew their motions, Counselor Diamond and Counselor Fawnin. Okay, new business, discussion and action, Poco Festival Update, Roseanne.
Well, they can't for the TV, that's the issue.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I assume everyone has received the report that Anthony, our financial report Anthony Esposito helped me compile, this as of September 30th, and within just these past few days, we have had several changes. Again, the figure is pretty close, we knew we did come out ahead, we'd been at 10, $15,000 mark. I did receive another bill in the office today, and I don't know on your report, the hayrides, which were sponsored by the agricultural commission, were inadvertently put in under our revenue, and they are not listed.
So how much was that?
It's not up there.
Oh, that sits off up here already?
Yeah. So if I'm open to any questions?
Do you have backup for some of these areas, like other contractual for $63,000? What does that, we usually get a backup as to what that number, and recreation, what's the $20,000 for everything?
That's my salary, that's my salary. $20,000 clearly is my salary. The other contractual consists of things like the police department, the overtime on the police, not overtime, the charge for this, then we use the East Haven, Bramford, and North Haven Police as well as our police.
Can we get a breakdown of that, because we've always gotten a breakdown.
Of the other contractual?
Everything, it's on here.
Okay.
Yeah, Roseanne, I know you weren't here last year, but that was, this whole thing of other contractual, really doesn't sit well with us. And you know what, I mean, the PV should be a pretty easy number to come up with.
Oh, I have, I have those...
Right, so if you can break this $63,000 or whatever it is down and tell us where that money went, that'd be great.
And technical supplies? What are the technical supplies?
So technical supplies, other contractual?
Yeah, technical equipment.
Oh, yeah, technical, oh, technical supplies are the potatoes, the toppings.
And then property development? I mean, it's not much, but what do we have for you?
Right, and actually, there's a change to that, that I had sent a memo over to Anthony. The property development is, they put a water line, a permanent water line in on the site now, and it actually, some of the money from technical supplies should be in the property development.
So every year?
Like $11,096, $1,196, but that's a permanent water line, sinks, and all I can say is that he sure was very pleased with having that, it's on to the property.
Can you break that down? It was another report of every...
Water line, okay, sure. The water line, okay, sure.
Anything that...
So, technical supplies and, um, I can do, do equipment rentals, obviously, that's, you know, the refrigerated truck, the tent rentals, that type of thing.
Yeah, but we generally get a breakdown on each of those categories after what?
So, those three categories?
Oh, I just don't...
Did we do better last year than we did this year? Does anybody know?
Yes, yeah.
We did better this year. We did better this year.
No, no, we did better last year. And probably part of the reason is because of the, we had rain.
Right.
Definitely had rain on that Saturday and it hurt not only us, but the amusement rides were down quite a bit on the Saturday due to the rain. People didn't tend to show up till later in the afternoon, four, five o'clock, compared to last year where it was a beautiful weekend. We had the rain on the Thursday last year, which was the first year we had the four days, so it was hard to judge that. But those, last year was a better year for bottom line than this year was. Yeah. I have twenty thirteen right here.
And what was your number for twenty thirteen?
Twenty-five something. Okay. I, I had from last year roughly twenty-five thousand. Okay, I'll get a breakdown of that.
Thank you so much, Rosie.
But if you truly look at it, though, we paid you and have fourteen thousand.
Right, that's correct. You've always paid some, maybe not quite, you know, the same amount, but there was always some...
I'm just saying it's not, it's not as big a drop as you, as you think if you, you know, look at the added expense.
Correct, correct. All right, I'll get a breakdown, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, Dan Cosgrove Animal Shelter Quarterly Report. Donna, good evening.
Yes, we'll need to talk into that so the TV takes it up. It is working, not the Thomas.
Wish somebody could fix this so it stays there.
Test, test, test.
Fuck it out. Fuck it out, fuck it out. All right, we're here. I mean, it's ridiculous, dude. My. Just take one of these.
It's long enough.
It's ridiculous.
There you go. One of these.
Love?
Thank you.
Okay, just want to start with some of the activities that I've reported last, up to the last quarter, in regards to the summary. Animal camp, there were a hundred and thirty six kids that were enrolled. I believe I mentioned this at the last meeting. They were being educated about wildlife, petting animals in the community, including the nature center. So, that was a great success. The shelter was providing technical food to food factories, to especially, that's approximately eighty-seven families from Ramford, North Ramford, Northford, filling in for the long shoreline. And as I just mentioned, Lynn, we will help you out with, for day, with May, Lord Verbitz Animal Shelter. We had a Woodstock musical festival, festival rather, which was on the anniversary of the Woodstock festival back in sixty on the Ramford County. We were able to raise over several thousand dollars. And we also again had contributions of technical kits, et cetera, from the community. We had added some acoustical panels for the dog channel, for each dog channel, which helped absorb the sound, which we know how loud a barking dog can sound. That cost us about three thousand dollars, but once again, that all came from fundraising. New census system was added. Additionally, this allows us to stake holding areas for volunteer staff walking the dogs. This project was made possible from our fundraising. Every week, we've been having outside adoption events, took place at Petco. Obviously, when you do have adoption, then the animals are not adopted that day. People are screened and we do records checks and checks to who they're vet. We had an unfortunate circumstance. It was a court case that was in North Ramford, Route 139. And this was a resident who accused a little Jack Russell. She was the caretaker of a senior citizen there and basically had a hook wrapped around the Jack Russell, got slammed against the building. The neighbors have seen the incident, contacted the North Ramford Police and the Animal Control Department, Cosgrove Animal Shelter. There, there's going to be a court session this Friday in regards to this act of reputation.
Was the dog, is the dog okay now or not?
Yeah, the dog is at the animal shelter, has been at the animal shelter.
But he's okay?
Yeah, he's okay, yeah. This past weekend, we had our annual animal awareness day in the town of Green, with about two thousand people, with fifty vendors, a rescue camp, a musical achievement, a dog parade in support of the blessing of the animals. Probably about a hundred of the animals that came with the dogs were the blessings. We were able to raise fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. I just want to give you some numbers in regards to the impacted cats and dogs. The last quarter, there were eighteen cats impounded, that's for North Ramford and Northford, and twelve dogs were impounded, seventeen for adoption and four cats. Six of those dogs that were impounded were redeemed, five dogs were adopted, and three puppies were adopted. There were thirty-two complaints, which ranged from no cover for the rain, dogs left in their yards tied up and with no cover, which ranged just standing there being soaked, or no water or no food, routine checks, not extensive, like actual Jack Russell, regarding the enrollment. I would like to extend to all of you, we're going to have a meet, greet at duties on Saturday October 25th from twelve to three. And this is a personal invitation to all of you from our animal shelter community, including myself, Director Lord Verbitz, her cell and staff. We'll be complimenting the leverages and horse animals will be in attendance at that event. There's going to be posters that will be distributed around town and a number will be in the south and in the second town by the river. I have a letter that came from a Northford resident, which is a thank to the animal shelter, and I'm going to read it because I think it's pretty much provided by us what they do at the animal shelter and how highly they are regarded with many people in the communities in North Ramford, Northford, Ramford. Thank you, letter from Peterson family in Northford. We'd like to pay our gratitude and appreciation to Cosgrove Animal Shelter and especially its staff for all they have done for us, our family unit now approved, Kieran Casey, the brother and sister who are our wolfhound, Shepherds, Nexus. The shelter has gone above and beyond in their efforts to help us successfully incorporate the wonderful dogs into our lives. The professionalism and generosity exhibited during and after the adoption was incredible. It's what happens with an organization and staff truly care about what they do and their mission. Of the animals and the humans that belong to them is obviously their priority. We are proud to support them and just have been supported by them. We love our dogs and they love us sincerely, Peterson family. So, that's about it. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Sounds like things are going well. Thank you for coming.
Oh, by the way, you can give me email and cards to read that.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. All right. Item C, Edward Smith Library Trust Fund.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Atwater Trust Fund and Edward Smith Trust Fund have historically both been at the same institution, Bank of America, and they ended up at US Trust, which was an offshoot of Bank of America. Received a letter six, eight months ago from US Trust saying they didn't want to play in that arena anymore and we had to find another financial advisor to handle that fund. The delay in bringing this to you folks now is we tried to move both the Smith and Atwater simultaneously from US Trust and we decided to go with the US Bank. Working with an attorney at John's office, Paul Benjamin, it ended up being quite onerous to move the Atwater, required a probate court resolution, and was a lot more involved than we thought. So, all the parties agreed that we would leave the Atwater fund at US Trust and just move the Atwater, the Smith Library Funds to US Bank. It's all been blessed by, by John's office. Everybody's agreed to the documents, just need a resolution for you guys to agree.
How are we leaving if they're, if they're not doing that business?
Well, they, it's interesting, because I interpreted that they don't want to play in the trust market at all. But it's, and I don't know the exact, it's not that they don't want to play in the trust space anymore. There's some aspect of what they do with Smith they don't do with Atwater that they don't mind doing at all. It's other information. I was thinking the same thing. I wanted to move it all in one shot, but I don't know if you may with the middle of time, Paul, fuck you about it?
Uh, not really. Pretty much delegated to him.
Yeah, I mean, it's, but it was ironic, because we got the letter from US Trust, like, on a Monday, and that Friday, I had two letters from other banks that wanted the business. So, the word was out there that US Trust was getting out of that market and the competition was there. We interviewed Rockville Bank and US Bank and we decided to go with US Bank, do a relationship with them on our bond payments and their buy institutions, so...
Were there any, like, fees and all that to do all this?
Fees are covered.
All right.
Yeah. That's the other two, with the Atwater Trust and the nine ninety report that's filed by the bank is a lot more involved. Smith, because Smith is more town money per se that they manage, whereas Atwater is truly a trust in the legal sense of the word. That's, that's part of the problem, too, is the Atwater money has its own paralegal key number, basically, where the Smith is North Ramford money. Quite as easy to move that one.
But it does sound confusing. It sounds like they don't want to do it at all and then all of a sudden they're doing it.
Yeah, no, I know. I'll get the answer from Paul, the exact legal application, what the difference is. Bottom line is they want to just move, want to just move the US, the US Bank to spend the funds.
All right. I'll make a motion to authorize Mike Paul as town attorney, Anthony Esposito, the treasurer, finance director, to sign any necessary documentation, transfer the funds of the Edward Smith Trust Fund.
Second.
From US Trust to US Bank.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Whitworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angelaoni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item D, Steve Grant Approval of Application for the Fiscal Year 2015.
Yeah, this is the grant application completed and ready to submit. Just want to bring it back. Human council has to take action to get them incorporated as part of the application process and also seek out letters from our state representative and our state senator to complement this.
I just have a comment prior to submitting this. I would hope that you or someone will go over this. There are a number of typographical errors in the answers to the questions. And I have to mark if you would like my comment.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'd like to move to approve the submission of the Steve Grant Application for FY 2015 for the renovation of the MBIS tennis and basketball courts.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Whitworth, seconded by Counselor Angelaoni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angelaoni?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item fourteen, citizen's statement to the petition. Come on, Mars, you're going to say them? Okay, having none? Can I have a motion to go into executive session, including the town attorney and...
No, I'm sorry.
We have nothing?
We have nothing.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right. Moved by Counselor Fucy, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angelaoni?
Yes.
Wait, do you want to have any stick around?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
They all said yes, you couldn't hear them.